I'm informed that we can vote with our lights now, okay. Okay, item 10, this is the adoption of local amendments to the 2019 California Energy and Green Building Standards Codes, also known as REACH codes, determination that the adoption of the proposed ordinance and resolution is not a project subject to CEQA or that if it is a project, it is exempt from CEQA. So, can we have a staff report on this?
As printout in front of you. And staff report has been uploaded to the docket. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, Andre Devort, Sustainability Manager for the City of Cupertino, thanks for having me up today. Today we'll be joined as well by Ellison Folk with the City Attorney's Office. Happy to have her here. And also in the audience is John Supp with Silicon Valley Clean Energy, who will be available with any specific questions that he might be able to answer for us. So today we're addressing the REACH code ordinance. We last discussed this at a study session last month, and this is really the result of about a year of model code development by Silicon Valley Clean Energy and other regional partners. Today, we're going to go over what our draft ordinance intends to do, how we took the comments from council at the study session and the public comment period, and incorporated that into the draft ordinance. Ellison will fill in any details on the CEC approval and other elements that we built into the draft ordinance, for your clarification. And we really just intend this presentation to be brief and show you how staff has taken your recommendations in the model code and drafted something that we think is very appropriate for Cupertino. So, just very briefly, again, the green electric REACH code, the scope of this is a local amendment to the California Energy and Green Building Codes, addressing newly constructed buildings, both residential and non-residential, at the time of building permit application. And what staff has found through this process in reviewing the studies and speaking to experts is that this local amendment is justified based on local conditions here in Cupertino, that the measures are cost-effective and commercially feasible, and also that this local ordinance will not cause buildings to use more energy than the basic state code would allow. So, again, we think this draft ordinance is leading edge, if you look at what other cities in the Bay Area are doing, as I'll have a quick summary near the end here. So what are we talking about here? We're talking about the fact, as we went over in the study session, is attached to the agenda item here, the presentation we gave on the fact that fossil fuels, in the form of natural gas in buildings, represents 38 percent of the controllable emissions in the City of Cupertino. And if you add in the gas used in vehicle transportation, that jumps up to beyond 50 percent. So, the intent of the local ordinance here is to require, rather than incentivize, electric appliances in buildings, as well as to further require the build-out of electric vehicle charging infrastructure in newly constructed buildings beyond what the state code requires. Just briefly on the cost-effectiveness studies that we went over in the study session, the predicate of the cost-effectiveness test, which, again, the City of Cupertino needs to make a finding that we have considered the costs and benefits of a local REACH code when we go to apply our local ordinance to the California Energy Commission, really the biggest component predating savings, actually, on a newly constructed all-electric building, really come down to eliminating the gas infrastructure from a newly constructed building. So meter, plumbing, piping, all the associated labor and trade associated with gas infrastructure, shows that overall, there are enough avoided costs associated with building electric to make this ordinance cost-effective, and actually, cost savings in many cases. Similar findings on the electric vehicle side, the CEC does not require us to make a cost-effectiveness finding for modifications to the Green Building Code, which is where this EV local ordinance is located. However, looking to the cost-effectiveness analysis done by Silicon Valley Clean Energy, what staff found is that, number one, electric vehicle charging infrastructure is highly desirable in Cupertino, with 6 percent EV market share expected to grow to 18 percent by 2030 in the City of Cupertino. Furthermore, the cost savings associated with building new EV charging infrastructure at the time of new construction is notable, and actually quite significant, so avoiding a tenant later having to retrofit that equipment at a later date. So, again, the intent of the local ordinance is to require more EV charging infrastructure for construction in Cupertino compared to what the base building code requires. This is a summary. It's been tough to summarize what all the cities are doing. There are overall 22 cities in the State of California that have adopted a version of an electrification REACH code as of today. In the Bay Area, that's 11 cities in the Bay Area, with the latest being Saratoga, Los Catos, most recently. So this chart really is just intended to show the directional approach. It's very difficult to summarize the exact ordinances. We just want to note here that some flavor of the electric REACH code has been under consideration or adopted by these cities here. And this is just focused on the Bay Area. This doesn't show you the activity happening in Northern California and in Southern California. Again, the summaries here is just meant to show directionally, but we'll note that all of the cities have made local exemptions or requiring different building types to adopt a bit of a different approach. Just to look back at the activities that have happened to bring us to today, so, again, starting in January of this year, in earnest, Silicon Valley Clean Energy began the model code development process, which we signed a letter of intent to participate in, in April of this year, bringing us all the way through local public workshops here in Cupertino, held in September, presentation of the Planning Commission, and to the Chamber of Commerce in October, and our study session in November. I'll point out that staff also published a website and Frequently Asked Questions document, which is being updated as we receive further questions from the public, that's at Cupertino.org/REACHcodes. And that site will continue to be maintained. This is just a quick summary of a much more complete table of feedback that is in the staff report, just to highlight a few of the items. So, really, we've heard from the public, a really enthusiastic support for an all-electric ordinance. As you recall, in our study session, staff brought to council two options, one was all-electric, one was more of an electric preferred or incentivizing electric buildings approach. The feedback received at that study session and other forums is really a lot of support for an all-electric REACH code ordinance. Staff therefore changed the original recommendation, which was more of an electric preferred ordinance, to match that recommendation of the Sustainability Commission, which voted to also recommend to council all-electric. There's also mention to explore natural gas infrastructure ban, as adopted by the City Council Berkeley. Staff's response to that comment is really that, functionally speaking, the all-electric ordinance drafted today and before you would yield largely the same results as the Berkeley gas ban and their associated REACH codes. And we did receive at the council study session request to provide more community outreach and education specifically around electric cooking, and I'm happy to say that staff is underway with planning such outreach activities. Really excited to see what we can do here in Cupertino and in partnership with neighboring communities. I'll mention as well that Silicon Valley Clean Energy will be providing some implementation support for cities that have adopted a REACH code, particularly tools for the Building Division to use to streamline the acceptance and plan review for all-electric buildings. Furthermore, feedback received on requests to allow exceptions where appropriate, so this draft ordinance does include exceptions for building types that cannot meet the cost-effectiveness test, and maybe Ellison can provide a little commentary on that.
Yeah, so, I did want to say just a couple of words from a legal perspective about this provision in the draft ordinance, and that really is, this code is designed to work in conjunction with the California Energy Commission's energy codes that go into effect January 1st, 2020, and those codes really are designed to facilitate building electrification, but because they are still working out some of the real details in the implementation and the modeling for compliance with those codes, we thought it would be a good idea to include a provision that allows the building official to modify the requirements of this code, where a builder can show that it's not possible to show compliance with state energy standards using commercially available technology, which would include all-electric technology that complies with minimal federal efficiency standards. All the evidence that we've seen so far and the reports that have been done indicates that buildings will be able to comply with the state energy codes using an all-electric pathway, but this is just an extra safety valve because it is new and it is just being implemented, so.
And staff really believes that this particular exception was wise, particularly because we are addressing all types of buildings with the ordinance, and so with the understanding that some types of buildings may come up in the future that might not have a modeled pathway for the CEC requirements. So this is pretty, it seems like a pretty limited exception to address that particular Other exceptions are...
Just out of curiosity on this point, have other cities in the county adopted this provision?
Yeah, that was my question as well. Does Berkeley have this exception?
Yeah, this is modeled on the Berkeley exception.
And do we know about the other cities in this county?
A number of the other cities are doing either electric preferred ordinances, or they're more limited, they only apply to new residential development, so Cupertino...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that there's a safety valve here, but I just was curious, so, do we know about Menlo Park, what they did with this?
Menlo Park did not include this.
Okay, thank you.
And Palo Alto, in your chart, they kind of do not, they're not requiring all-electric, there are some exceptions for certain buildings, I mean, how do they decide what buildings? Or is that kind of a similar exception, but just in a different way?
We do know it's more limited, well, we'd have to do some more research on the Palo Alto. Again, every city's had such a different approach, it's been hard to know off the top of our heads what Palo Alto's requiring.
Okay. All right, continue.
Okay. So, I won't blabber too much, but, again, the Frequently Asked Questions, we think we addressed in the ordinance and in the Frequently Asked Questions published on the website. So remodeling my home, not in scope, tenant improvements of existing building, not in scope, we can't prove that there's a cost-effective way to require electrification where gas service already exists, as of yet. Needing gas for a particular industrial research process, generator, fuel cell, resiliency needs, not in the building, so it's not in the scope of the REACH code as drafted today. Restaurants, this draft does allow exceptions for commercial kitchens. So here's what the draft ordinance will do, should council decide to adopt this local amendment. These are the items that will be enforced, submitted to the CEC for approval and enforced by the building official upon receiving approval by the CEC and the California Building Standards Commission. So, low-rise residential, which includes single-family duplexes, townhomes, and multifamily, all-electric in the building. Simply put, the definition of all-electric is that there's no gas plumbing in that building. High-rise multifamily, so broadly speaking, non-residential, which includes high-rise multifamily, same requirement, all-electric in the building. And here's where some of those exceptions occur for building types that we know wouldn't be feasible, built all-electric, or desirable, that are factories, hospitals, scientific laboratories, commercial kitchens, research and development space types, and essential facilities serving the City of Cupertino. I will note that any gas appliances that are installed through exceptions, built into the code, that there needs to be a pre-wiring for a future electric appliance. Furthermore, this code includes provisions for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, as I mentioned. Again, we're taking a step above what the State of California is requiring, including requiring 10 percent of office buildings to provide Level 2 EV charging stations. So that's a pretty good target, again, we based that on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy cost analysis that showed this was as close to optimal as we could find for provisioning new EV charging infrastructure in the City of Cupertino. What are the next steps? Should council decide to adopt this ordinance at a second reading, staff would need to put together a package, including the cost-effectiveness findings, the resolution, and submit that to the California Energy Commission for any energy-related portions. I will mention that several cities were approved by the California Energy Commission just recently, including Menlo Park, which is quite similar to what's before you today. And that should happen, we're hoping, after adoption of this REACH code ordinance. That is the end of my presentation, so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, yeah, I have a couple before we go to public comment. So you keep saying "in the building," what about things like swimming pool heaters or spa heaters, or barbecues that are, used to be piped directly into natural gas? I mean, if a hotel wanted to put an indoor or an outdoor pool, would they be allowed to use a gas heater for the water?
Just reading from the definition of all-electric building, a building that has no natural gas or propane plumbing installed within the building, that uses electricity as the sole source of energy for its space heating, water heating, including pools and spas, cooking appliances, and clothes drying appliances. All-electric buildings may include solar thermal pool heating.
But you keep saying "within the building," but a pool might not be within the building, it would be outside the building.
That's noted, I would read this to say including pools and spas.
Right, I mean, it could include an indoor pool, okay. I'm just thinking if the city eventually built an aquatic center, and it was a year-round aquatic center, it would, you know, probably not be practical to heat the water any other way, except with natural gas.
Ellison, would you make any comment on that definition?
I think it would probably include that situation, that's right.
Is this specifically called out?
But would that fall under the exceptions?
Could we look at the language of the resolution, is whether outdoor heating is required to be electric or not?
The way this is defined currently, that's not within the scope.
So outdoor gas would still be allowed, according to the current code?
According to the draft, correct.
So, is that how other cities do it, shouldn't we just, is there any reason we want to allow outdoor gas use?
Nothing that I can currently think of. Other than that this is the model code, as was adopted by Silicon Valley Clean Energy, as well as Menlo Park became one of our primary models after their code was adopted.
But I think you said there are possible exceptions if there's no reasonable way to use electricity for a specific purpose.
That's correct, yes.
I guess I would add to the pool comment, that I know a lot of owners for decades, have been using hot water heating on rooftops...
Correct, yes.
...to help warm their pool through heat exchange, or just directly piping the water right through these tiny plastic tubes. What I've learned through the last year is, it's now becoming economical enough to actually take all that away and put up solar, and then use that to help heat the pool, of course you have the sun during the day. And the solar system is more flexible, so it gives you the option of, yes, heating the pool or using that electricity for an EV or some other purpose.
All right, I guess I'm ready to go to public comment. Now I have a number of cards. We have Sanaa Singh Hall, followed by Jenny Green, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome.
I'm not Sanaa, but he had to leave, I will be representing.
Okay, sure.
So I can speak later, though.
Oh, okay. Jenny Green, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Jenny Green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers and City Manager. I'm Jenny Green, and I'm here tonight as a volunteer on behalf of Mothers Out Front South Bay. Mothers Out Front is an organization of mothers who are working to preserve a livable climate for our children by taking action to solve the climate crisis. We're here tonight to ask you to pass a REACH code to make new buildings in Cupertino all-electric with no natural gas infrastructure. The United Nations tells us that we have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by the year 2050 in order to avoid the worst effects of climate change. That's only 30 years away, so whatever we build now will still be in use in the year 2050. That's why it's so important that new buildings adhere to a zero emissions standard. As you know, Cupertino residents and buildings already have access to 100 percent fossil-free electricity through our community choice energy provider, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. By banning natural gas, you'll be making 100 percent emission-free buildings possible. As you also know, a lot of other local cities, as you refer to tonight, have already passed REACH codes and gas standards, so we hope Cupertino will follow suit. Buildings are the source of about 40 percent of greenhouse gas emissions in the South Bay, so we have the opportunity to significantly reduce emissions by passing a strong REACH code. On a personal note, I also want to add that I work for a local community center that has a pool, and you can heat them with a heat pump, an electric heat pump, it does not have to be gas heating. So I know you guys probably want to look into it more, but it is technically feasible. For the sake of our children and grandchildren, please act now to protect our climate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being brief. Jennifer Griffin, Rhoda Frye, and I can't really, it looks like Anna Kehong. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I have gone to all of the meetings that the Sustainability Committee had, the study sessions that we had, and I will tell you again, because of the housing bills, I am leery of adopting anything quickly. We have to study everything. I am, yeah, I'm older, I own a home, I have elderly relatives, and I am very, very leery of just giving up the gas lines. I have been reading a lot about what is happening in Oregon. Oregon did not pass the REACH codes. They adopted HB 2001, but they did not pass the REACH codes at the same time, even though they were pressured. I am very, very concerned, because there are places in Cupertino and in the Santa Cruz Mountains where people don't have access to electricity. They use propane. My uncle had a home in the Santa Cruz Mountains, they never had electricity, they had propane tanks. And we just went through recently where my mother's power was out three separate times in the last two months due to the PG&E outages. The only thing she had was gas. Her gas heater worked, her landline worked, I stripped everything that was electric off of it, and we stripped everything that was electric off of her gas heater in her house. And she had hot water, and she had a landline. And, so are we replacing PG&E with Silicon Valley Clean Energy? I don't understand the relationship here. My sympathies are with PG&E. If we go to electrification, like the governor and the mayor of San Jose wants to do to take over PG&E, you don't realize that the telephone poles that come with it have reciprocal maintenance agreements with AT&amp;T. It's not a clean break. I think we, before we go into this, we need to study it. I drive to Santa Cruz, I'm not going to be buying an electric vehicle anytime soon. I have to know that my car will go 200 to 300 miles. Someone was stuck on 17 for three hours yesterday. If you had an electric vehicle, you wouldn't have been able to move at all. We need to study this, and I'm sorry, the housing bills are tied up in this, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, there's no ban on propane, right? Anyone could still use propane tanks if they wished?
That's correct.
Okay. Rhoda Frye, followed by Anna Kehong, followed by Carol Cross. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I'm Rhoda again. This, similar to the cement issue, this is a global warming issue, and I wanted to circle back briefly on what's going on with cement. The EPA appears to, well, they're going to, they want to allow Lehigh to produce more NOx than other cement plants. Some, of course, would be more, but that's specific to Hatch P. And one of the things that Lehigh does to reduce the NOx is actually to inject ammonia, and the next Title V air permit is going to allow 410 trucks of ammonia to come in per year, that's up about 100 trucks, and that worries me, too. But anyway, getting out of the coats, and I'm going to give you a handy-dandy sheet when I'm done, because I typed some notes up before I left the house today. We are incinerating our planet. Now is not the time to make incremental changes. We must make transformative changes now. The proposed ordinance must be made better. Let's go back to the drawing board, or at least make it better. Just to review quickly, there's actually three levels of CalGreen, I'll say good, better, and best. Good, and then there's tier one and tier two, and LEED is another standard where you have same thing, good, better, best, Certified Silver, Gold, Platinum. So the proposed ordinance doesn't go far enough, for example, in Palo Alto, and I looked at current codes, not the proposed ones, but in Palo Alto, for non-residential projects, the city has adopted CalGreen Tier One for tenant improvements and renovations, and CalGreen Tier Two for new construction. Cupertino does neither. In Palo Alto, for residential projects, the city has adopted CalGreen Tier One for additions and renovations over 1,000 square feet, and CalGreen for Tier Two for new construction. Cupertino does neither. Los Altos requires Greenpoint ratings for additions greater than 300 square feet. Cupertino only requires Greenpoint rating for housing developments of 10 homes or more. So, we're not doing as good as them. Cupertino proposes LEED, Certified Silver, Gold, Platinum. Cupertino proposes LEED Certified for commercial buildings up to 25,000 square feet, while Menlo Park requires LEED Silver, starting at 10,000 square feet. And then, and, but Cupertino has no, no gold requirement, whereas Menlo Park Commercial Buildings over 100,000 square feet must be LEED Gold. So you got it, we can do better, guys. So the other, the other ideas that come to mind is that all electric buildings are less costly to build than buildings with natural gas. Therefore, all electric buildings should not be permitted to be less energy efficient than those built with natural gas. And it appears the ordinance is heading that way. In order to make BMR housing more affordable, it needs to be more energy efficient in order to reduce energy costs, which in turn reduces the cost of living. This is another reason why there should be no exceptions for making buildings less energy efficient. The other thing I'd like you all to look into is requirements for air leakage testing, as is required by other cities to promote energy efficiency. Thank you very much, and I'll hand you my paper.
Great, thank you. So can staff comment on what Rhoda was talking about?
Sure, I can go into the local green building ordinance, which staff is recommending we reaffirm, re-adopt, as was adopted in 2012, and I can go over a little bit of the details on what the current green building ordinance requires. So the current building, green building ordinance here in Cupertino does rely on the Greenpoint-rated, third-party rating system for residential and LEED for non-residential developments. So just a brief summary, single-family, multifamily homes have, have no additional requirements beyond the California Green Building Code. With the city review that those provisions are being met, single-family and multifamily home developments equal to or greater than nine homes are required certification with the Greenpoint-rated system or LEED Silver. And city verification that the certification has been received by one of those organizations. In non-residential, CalGreen Building Code, Base Building Code is required for small, non-residential developments defined as less than 25,000 square feet. Midsize, 25,000 through 50,000 square feet requires to be LEED certified with verification that that certificate has been issued by LEED, and large developments require LEED Silver.
Great, so what would it take for us to move closer to Palo Alto and Los Altos? I mean, can we pass this ordinance but also modify the green building codes?
One of the, yeah, sorry, one of the advantages of, of matching with a third-party rating system like LEED is that it's continually updated over time. And so if council wished to, we could look at increasing those thresholds, say from Certified to Silver or Gold. LEED, LEED Version Four, which is the most current version of LEED, is, is quite a good green building standard, well-accepted and owned by the architectural community, design community. And so if council wanted to move closer to that direction, it would be a matter of staff modifying that, that piece of the local green building ordinance.
It seems we don't have any comparison table for the CalGreen standard, right? It would have been nice to have this laid out. So we have, so all we are doing, the current resolution is just matching the old standard. We are not improving anything.
I'd say that the, the standard has improved over time, again, as LEED has, has updated over time to drive building performance, but that's true. The existing way the ordinance is written, staff is recommending that we re-adopt that.
So why has not staff considered a better standard like Palo Alto and Los Altos?
I would say it's not very common for cities to have a green building standard that is as progressive as the one in Cupertino. And so it seemed to be appropriate, but absolutely we would be able to take your direction if we wanted it to be matched closer to what Palo Alto has done.
It seems today we don't have enough information to just randomly change it here and there, right? It seems we need more information. Here are the standard of these different cities, what each of them means. And I would like to know also how much extra cost it will mean for people who are building houses. It's always good to be better, but then we also need to consider if the cost is tolerable. Do we have any such information now?
I, I have no current market data, but that's something that is available, most likely. The, the current standard seems, seems good. And one thing that I would note is that the local green building ordinance can be reexamined or re-adopted anytime, amended. It's not really related to the REACH code in terms of Tier One or Tier Two of CalGreen. And so we have, we do have that luxury of time to take further look at that, at that topic.
Yeah, let me continue with the public comment. Annika Huang, followed by Carol Cross, followed by, one second, Brett Anderson. Welcome, Annika. Is Annika here? Okay, how about Carol Cross? Great.
I have to say, I am just delighted with the staff recommendations, and I'm really hoping that the city council adopts an all-electric with a gas ban. And here's why. Climate change is not just a future threat. It's something that's already upon us, and the trajectory is going from worrying to horrific. In fact, many scientists and experts in the field say that ultimately our place as a species on this planet is in danger, and it's a danger caused almost entirely by our collective actions. The old saw, when you're in a hole, when you find yourself in a hole, the first thing to do is stop digging, really applies here. And that's precisely what we need to do. We're going to have to eliminate all fossil fuels eventually, and it's going to be tough. It really is going to be tough. But in the final analysis, that's absolutely what has, has to happen if we can prevent or if we want to prevent horrific climate change. It's not a question of if, but when. Most of the necessary actions required to completely eliminate fossil fuels are going to cost millions or even billions of dollars, and they're going to be immensely challenging. But what you're being asked to consider tonight is really a pretty easy call, and yet it's, it's amazingly impactful. As was mentioned, the, the emissions from city, city and residential buildings come to 38% here in Cupertino, and you can eliminate that entirely with all future buildings if you eliminate the fossil fuels, that is, a complete ban on gas. We hope that you say yes to an all-electric code and no to gas. Silicon Valley's Clean Energy means that, that the emissions will be zero in terms of methane, and so it's, I hope it's going to be an easy decision for all of you. Please say yes to a gas ban and all electric buildings. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Next, I have Brett Anderson, followed by Neil, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Brett Anderson, I'm a resident of Palo Alto, and I'm also an active member of Carbon Free Palo Alto. So we've been lobbying for a few years for banning gas in Palo Alto. We bought offsets for the last two years, and we're now urging the city to take the real step, which is eliminate the gas use altogether. So in Palo Alto, we did pass, or council passed a resolution in early December to have all low-rise residential be mandated all-electric by effective April 1st. Under the REACH code, the way they mandate that is specifically to say you have to use electric for heating, you have to use electric for cooking, you have to use electric for drying. So you specify the uses that have to be electric. So we're doing that for low-rise residential, and all the other building categories need to be addressed within 2020. So we were able to pull the, the staff proposal up from 2022 to 2020 to completely mandate all buildings all-electric within the year. There was a challenge in Palo Alto around the modeling software being available to certify all-electric solutions, and that's why the timing's a little bit up to staff in terms of when it gets done. It's when it's really feasible to get done, when the available software is, is from the, the CEC to, to approve those, those building types. I think the, the important thing here is that you're all moving very rapidly to, to pass what is essentially a ban on new building, using gas in new buildings. This is a really important step, but the main event is existing buildings. And that's where Palo Alto still has to do a lot of work to apply this to ADUs. That will also happen in the coming several months, and also to major additions. And that's actually, most of the new building in Palo Alto is just additions and, and ADUs right now. So in, in Cupertino, I urge you to also start looking very quickly at existing buildings. And the, the good thing about electrification is that no matter what, if you were today to take a heat pump water heater from Lowe's or, or Home Depot and replace your gas water heater from day one, you'd be saving gas and saving greenhouse gas emissions. Even if all the electricity is generated by a gas plant on the grid, you're still saving and lowering your emissions by replacing with high-efficiency heat pumps. So the upfront cost is the only thing stopping us from making this equation work for existing buildings. That's really where we, where we need to work. And together with cities aligning on REACH codes and aligning on gas bans, we're sending a very strong signal to the market to train up, for suppliers to train up, stock those items, and really learn how to deliver this business. It's common practice all over the US, in the East Coast, it's common practice around the world. If we bring it to California with these kind of code changes, it will be a real leg up for addressing existing buildings. Thank you.
Oh, can I ask you one question about Palo Alto? So these other cities?
Yes.
I'm looking at the chart, require all-electric, require all-electric. Palo Alto is require all-electric for some building types and limit gas for others. So what, what does that mean? What, what is the gas for others?
So, so we're, we are mandating all-electric for low-rise residential. The other buildings, we are going to mandate those sometime during the course of 2020. In the meantime, we have a favored incentive to go all-electric for those other building types.
So what are the other building types?
So other building types like retail, office buildings, hotels, motels, high-rise residential, those are the other building types that are not in the low-rise residential that we address.
You mean existing ones or new ones?
Those are all new buildings.
New buildings?
It's all, only new buildings. Yeah, this doesn't apply.
Then why do you have to phase in for those other types? Why can't, I didn't understand why Palo Alto couldn't just require all these new builds?
Because the, right-
You mentioned some software.
Yes, the, 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 the CEC releases software that allows you to validate your, your electric solutions. They do not have that software yet available for those building types. So they have it for single-family homes, residential, low-rise residential, but we're, we are trying, we have, we're, we're to some extent dependent on the CEC to provide the software that certifies these electric solutions in these other buildings. We think that's coming imminently in a few months, but we're not quite sure.
Wouldn't we have the same, face the same problem?
I think we're facing.
And yet all those other cities adopted all-electric despite that.
Well, there, there was an exception that, that I think you included in your text, which allows this, this timeline to say, well, if you can't certify it per the CEC, you get an exception. So that's kind of how they-
Right, kind of the same thing.
Exactly.
So how about limit gas?
I would say you're in analysis paralysis. I mean, the CEC will certify plans passed in January in two weeks, that's my understanding. And we expect, right, that all these local cities that have adopted these things, CEC will certify. But if, if our legal staff knows otherwise, I'd like to hear that.
Okay.
So how about the limit gas for others? Why is, do you know why that's different?
Right, that's what he just said.
He said for some building types, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so for the, for the high-rise residential and commercial building types, there, the REACH code is an incentive. So if you build all-electric, you don't have to go above the base code. If you build with mixed fuel, you have to reach a certain percentage margin. And that will apply until we, we implement the mandates, which are coming this year.
Right.
And that goes back to the-
So does the Palo Alto code apply to building additions? You mentioned the-
That has been left up. Staff has to come back to council with a proposal for-
So if someone already has a multifamily building and they are adding some more units, that will not apply for now?
Correct. If that's, if that's considered an addition, then they would not.
No, I mean, what about a standalone ADU?
Standalone ADU, it's not yet covered. Again, staff has come back with a proposal.
Yeah, we need to cover that as well.
So for us, for us, I, what's our code, the proposed code right now for additional, addition, not ADU, but I think like addition to an existing building?
Additions to existing buildings are not covered by the electrification REACH code.
But what about a separate ADU that's not attached to the existing building?
We currently have an exemption for accessory dwelling units that are newly constructed.
So they could have gas?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should, well, anyway, all right, thank you. Okay, and you were Brett, correct?
Yes.
All right, next is Neil, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by, looks like Diane Bailey. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support for this item. As a young person, I have a lot of anxiety over climate change and its effect on my generation. This is a small but important way that Cupertino can play a role in the global movement. And moving forward, we can look at some other great climate solutions as well. I'm a big fan of BRT. We should check that out, or Light Rail as well, along Stevens Creek, get some of the cars off of the road. But yeah, I wanted to voice my support for this item. We should go all-electric. It's just for new buildings, so we don't have to go back and look at old ones currently. And we're looking at potentially ownership of PG&E, public ownership of PG&E, and so the argument that electrification might not always be available is one that we can more readily take into our hands in the future as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Peggy Griffin, followed by Diane Bailey, followed by Dashil Leeds. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor Sharpe and councilmember staff. For the people here and those watching at home, I'd like you to get answers to the following questions. The ordinance seems to say new construction, and I'd like to know, does this apply to home tear downs, where they go completely wipe the house away and rebuild it? Is that considered a new construction? You've answered ADUs and garage conversions. At what point does the city consider a remodel a new construction? It doesn't have to be completely torn down or a percentage of the house? I'd like you to confirm that it will not, homeowners won't be required to retrofit when remo, when remodeling. Now, if you remodel, oftentimes you have to retrofit new, to new standards. So I'd like to know that. And the last one is, if you could confirm that if my gas appliance dies, am I required to replace it with electric, or can I use gas? Just informative, thank you.
Okay, would you like to answer those, especially about the teardown?
Sure. So again, the electrification and electric vehicle charging requirements would apply to a newly- would apply to a newly constructed building. In the residential context, and Cupertino actually has a link on the Building Division website that defines what a newly constructed building is. So the intent is to stay consistent with that definition. If I recall correctly, it defines a certain percentage of both the roof and the foundation of the home that's removed as then considered a newly constructed building. So it's a significant teardown, is the answer to the commenter's question. Regarding replacement appliance, no, there's no current requirement in this draft to require electrification of a single appliance should one be replaced in a home. Rather, staff would prefer to use incentive programs in that case to incentivize electric appliances, as Silicon Valley Clean Energy has an example of a heat pump water heater replacement program that offers the consumer several thousand dollars to consider installing an electric heat pump water heater.
Great, thank you. Diana Bailey, followed by Dashil Leeds, followed by Lloyd McKee. Welcome, Diane.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm with a group called Menlo Spark. We are working towards a zero-carbon future for Menlo Park and all of Silicon Valley. I'm also here with Fossil Free Buildings of Silicon Valley. This is a collaboration of 30 different organizations working to really transition away from all fossil fuel use in buildings throughout the region. And I'm here in strong support of the staff-proposed ordinance today. I hope that you'll move forward swiftly to adopt it. There is one minor amendment that we're hoping that you can consider, and that is the addition of ADUs into the ordinance. And I'll note that San Jose recently moved to ban gas use in all ADUs. I think in this situation, simply including it with all-electric low-rise residential would be a wise choice and would save homeowners looking to build additional units a lot of money in avoided gas line extensions. Carol Cross and other commentators really summed up the benefits of this electric REACH Code very well. And so I'll be brief, that over 20 cities and several counties in California have moved forward with all-electric or similar policies to really phase out the use of fossil and fracked gas in new buildings for homes and commercial. And there are so many benefits, I won't go into details, but I'll just remind everyone that building all-electric saves people money, it improves health and safety, it reduces pollution, and it creates more resilient communities and really facilitates the use of battery energy storage as backup power in addition to the solar that's already required. We've been working with experts around the state who help design and build all-electric homes, multifamily, and commercial developments. We have guidebooks that are online. And as we talk to different architecture firms and designers and engineering firms, this is really the wave of the future. It might feel new to some folks in California, but it's been done abroad and in different regions within the US for many decades. So the technology is not new, the policy is new. And because of the climate crisis that we're in, we need bold actions from every city, big and small. And so I hope for the future of our children here in Cupertino and for a safe and livable environment for everyone in Cupertino. I hope that you'll move forward swiftly to adopt this all-electric REACH Code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dashil Leeds, followed by Lloyd McKee. Did I pronounce your name right?
You did, yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
My name is Dashil Leeds. I'm a conservation assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter. I'm also here on behalf of a couple members of the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team, who were here, but it's finals and it's getting pretty late, so they had to take off. So Sina and Annika would like to be here as well. We are in strong support of an all-electric REACH Code. This year, we've experienced the hottest June, July, and September on record. And this July was the hottest month ever recorded. We are certainly living in a climate crisis. And the question is, will humanity avoid its effects? Will we protect our ecosystems and the species that we share this planet with? I'd like to thank you for staff for being very diligent and really receptive to community input throughout this entire process and for developing a really strong ordinance. I think this ordinance could be a little bit stronger, and we have some specific recommendations for council motion tonight. So the staff recommendation in November recommended an all-electric code with an exemption process for for-profit commercial kitchens. So gas was prohibited in for-profit commercial kitchens, but they could apply for an exemption if there was a particular hardship. This current draft of the code has a blanket exemption for all kitchens and non-residential buildings. So we would like to see the original staff proposal from November taken into account, where you have by default no gas in non-residential kitchens. And then you have that hardship exemption that restaurants could apply to if there was a specific circumstance where electric was not viable for them. This pathway, by the way, this so-called hardship exemption is the same sort of exemption that Menlo Park and Mountain View have taken in their codes. So we strongly recommend strengthening up this code a little bit in that way. We are also supportive of eliminating gas in ADUs. And I also just want to bring up very quickly that with regards to essential facilities, that San Jose, on September 17th, updated their municipal code policy to, or their municipal building policy, to prohibit natural gas in all new municipal buildings. So I think with regards to essential facilities, it is certainly possible to build all-electric. And for those that cannot, they again would fall under the hardship exemption. So with regards to the specific code language, this would be on PDF pages five to six of the draft ordinance. We're looking at removing, it would be 16.54.102A, and then removing specifically exception two, which covers essential facilities, and most importantly, exception three, which covers kitchens within non-residential buildings. It is super, super important to avoid building these gas lines entirely. Once they are in the ground, they will constantly leak methane into our atmosphere, and they will be incredibly expensive to retrofit out once we put them in the ground. And to meet our climate goals, we eventually will absolutely need to retrofit out this gas infrastructure. So we are in a crisis. We are dealing with what doesn't exist yet with what's new. So let's not make the problem worse, and there's no reason we should be building new gas when we can avoid it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My last card is Lloyd McKee.
Hello this evening. What I'm interested in finding out is a lot of the questions that Peggy asked regarding existing homes. Existing homes can stay as long as a century. And one thing that you're not really considering is these existing homes, they don't switch as soon as a car does. I think there's statistics, people switch out their cars every seven years. So what you can do is set up policies to improve the cars, and then they get more efficient over time. Well, homes, they're going to sit there for centuries. So I don't see really anything in here to encourage people to get gas out of their homes. So they could just sit there until 2050, and they'll just be there. Yeah, their water heater will break, but they could find another way to put another gas water heater in there or something. And so you're not really encouraging people to really improve what they do have. That's my major concern. I know you want to concentrate on everything new, but houses don't switch as soon as cars do. So I think you need to consider encouraging people to get the gas out of their house. That's what I would like you to do. And you should probably publish something in the scene, the Cupertino scene, about the rebates that may be available through California or some other commission, where if you switch out your water heater, then you get a thousand-dollar rebate or something like that. I really think you have to consider the existing homes you have. So to turn a blind eye to that is not really a good idea. That's my major concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we can bring it back to the council now. Yeah, what a couple of people raised, including one of the most recent speakers, commercial kitchens and ADUs. I would certainly like to put the language back the way it was for commercial kitchens and also prohibit natural gas on detached ADUs. I mean, if it's an ADU inside the existing house, that's one thing. But a separate ADU that's newly built, I mean, I don't think there's any reason that it should have natural gas. You're going to be running a new electric panel down to that ADU anyway, so you'll be able to put in sufficient capacity for electric appliances. So can you guys comment on that?
Regarding commercial kitchens, certainly staff can bring back what was in the original proposal that went before the Sustainability Commission. And I can read off that, what essentially was a modification request, if that would be helpful at this point.
Sure, go.
I may even have it in my slides. Sorry, bear with me one moment. Yep. So originally proposed was, as the speaker described, a more of a modification request. So the default would be to require all-electric in commercial kitchens. This is, language is quite similar to what was adopted in, I believe, Menlo Park. So the exception would be modified to read that non-residential buildings containing a for-profit restaurant or an employee kitchen may apply to the building official for a modification to install gas-filled cooking appliances. And that it does give the building official some guidance on what that request must be based on, so that there's a business-related reason to cook with the flame, that it cannot be reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source, and that the applicant has employed reasonable methods to mitigate greenhouse gas impacts of fuel-fired appliance.
Yeah, so why was it changed?
Really based on some public input around sensitivity that perhaps commercial kitchen operators weren't ready for an all-electric kitchen. But we believe this modification is quite reasonable and does allow for particular instances where, for example, that keeps being brought up is pizza ovens or, you know, wood-fired style food items that may be the core business to apply for that exception. So the building official would have this guidance in order to allow those narrow use cases.
Right, so there was a way to apply for an exception, so I don't understand why it was changed then?
Just based on public feedback and the reading that we got from the public, specifically for restaurant operators.
Even though they could apply for an exception?
Correct.
Okay, well, I personally would want to put the original language back.
You were saying that the exception would be pretty narrow? Or does that mean some restaurants might not get the exception? Like maybe a smaller restaurant might not get it? Or do we only allow it for pizza oven?
In this case, what's--
Right now, it's pretty general, right?
Correct. Today, the draft ordinance is a broad exception for commercial kitchens. What is being discussed now is a more narrow request to modify a design if it, if there's a demonstrated need, even a small or a large restaurant. For example, if they're a pizza restaurant, they need a wood-fired or gas-fired oven, can use this exception to apply for that use case.
Like Chinese restaurant, I think they need a lot of higher power from gas. So they can all apply, right? Any professional restaurant should be able to apply for this exception?
If they can demonstrate a business-related reason to cook with the flame. In the specific example of wok cooking, I think that technology is probably to the point where a commercial kitchen doing stir fries could most likely do that with electric cooking today. So this is--
I thought, I think the concern from the restaurant industry is, yes, you could do electric for these fries and stuff, and the cost will be higher, and their margin of profit is very small. And so you are saying with this exception, common restaurant won't be allowed to use gas?
In this exception, or in this modification request, the burden would be on the applicant to demonstrate that there's, number one, a business-related reason to cook with the flame, and that, number two, this can't be reasonably achieved with an electric appliance.
So that is a very narrow. This exception only allows some very narrow usage of restaurant, not any restaurant. Can we change this exception to be more? I mean, I agree that we don't want to have a blanket exception that any non-residential building will be allowed to use gas. I think it makes sense that we have them apply for an exception. But then I would like the exception to be more, that should be applicable for any professional commercial kitchen. Because, yeah, there might be option for electricity, but then usually that's more costly. And electricity, so electric appliance is right now still more costly. So, and, yeah, and also I think the taste will be different, especially if it's a restaurant that has multiple branches. They might have specific things that they use for every franchise. Then if you require that, they won't be able to even have a branch here in Cupertino.
In this case, they would have to adapt their design to build in Cupertino in order to meet this requirement.
So I support having this exception, but I would like it to be modified to be broader. So it's, any professional commercial kitchen can apply for the exception.
Yeah, I would not support that.
Can I go next?
Sure.
Go.
So I agree with Stephen on this, and in fact, had been talking to staff about this. And, you know, a year ago, I was a skeptic about kitchens and gas. What I've learned in the last year leads me to believe that this is quite feasible, but it's going to take some time for people to get comfortable. So what we're not doing with this is talking about existing buildings, existing kitchens. Existing kitchen leased to a new company that wants to run a restaurant will have, right, the ability to continue to use that. What we're talking about is new construction to much tighter standards. So we know that climate change is a huge deal. And we know that, as the speaker from the Sierra Club said, right, we have, actually, our methane system is pretty leaky, we think. There's a lot of unburned methane that's leaking from the system. And we're not going to get rid of that for 50 years, because our building stock is as it is. But we have an opportunity to make a big difference in new construction with this and handle the rest of us, right, that live in the existing buildings or work in the existing buildings or go to restaurants in the existing buildings with incentives. And so at Silicon Valley Clean Energy, we have $6 million in programs to go try to transform things. You can get rebates on heat pumps today. You can get rebates on increasing your, you know, your electric panel. You can get things pre-wired so that when your, you know, your gas water heater goes out, you could put in the heat pump alternative. So I think this is an appropriate action, because we're not talking about today's building stock. We're talking about building stock that, you know, we're going to have for 50 years. So every new building, we have an opportunity to make it change. It's really hard, as one of the speakers said, once it's in. And as for commercial kitchens, one of the things that I, you know, I learned that I found so insightful is, people that are doing the best work in designing restaurants these days are moving to induction cooking, and there are-- these days are moving to induction cooking, and there are several reasons for it. One is, there's a tremendous heat load that fatigues employees in, in commercial kitchens. So owners and chefs are saying, we, we want to give our employees better working conditions. Second reason is that, so there's a lot of wasted heat from gas. The other reason is the indoor air pollution is really very, very significant. It's at levels that can be in order of magnitude more than we would consider safe outdoors. Formaldehydes and other things, and this is particularly prevalent with, with gas cooking, and no, nowhere more intense than in commercial kitchens. Finally, right, these induction cooking things are very powerful. They can heat water faster than gas, they can, they have bottoms for woks, they have tremendous ability to reduce heat and be safer, right? So there are occasionally fires in commercial kitchens. What the, what the induction cooking does is give a much safer solution, so for all, well, and finally, I'll say that at a place like the French Laundry, they've switched to, you know, this famous restaurant up in Napa, right? The chefs there and chefs in, in other such places have switched because they want more precise control. It's a gas flame, you know, the master chef knows his stove and he knows his recipe, he may be able to do it, but if he's not there that night, or if he's franchised 20 restaurants, if he wants something repeatable, he knows he can get it with a precise control that these programmable induction stoves offer. So I appreciate Stephen's thoughts and would concur with him on what I consider to be quite a reasonable criterion that would exempt, in certain circumstances, as demonstrable, but make the default to be electric. That's the starting point, and then, yes, we can see how things go. And we're also actually providing a significant blanket exemption in the, in the, in the, with the demonstrable, this is hurting your business, right? Okay, so I think, I think we have exemptions that are appropriate, but we'll make those folks designing, architecting our future kitchens in a way that defaults to electric, and that's where we start, so. And I, I think, yeah, for ADUs, I think Stephen makes a good point, so I'm supportive of his thoughts. Thank you.
So for the exemptions, I just, right, if you can't actually produce the cuisine without natural gas, that's fine. But if someone says, well, you know, it's going to cost me, you know, five cents more per meal to use electricity versus natural gas, I don't think that's a legitimate reason to get an exemption.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how that exemption would read, how that would work in the original proposal.
So at the Economic Development Committee meeting, we have Kevin McClellan from the Small Business Development Center. He specializes in helping restaurants, and he's very concerned about the reach code because restaurants, their margin is already very low, and they are struggling. And if you require electric, the, the appliance may be, I mean, maybe you need special appliance, special cook, then everything needs to be special. They might, a, a small restaurant might, they might not be able to do it. So, yeah, maybe in 10 years, every, more things will be ready, more people will, more appliances will be available at a reasonable cost, and more people will be trained on convection cooking. But we are not there yet. So I'm hoping that the exception would include economical reasons also, besides just the so-called business reason, which is actually undefined.
Well, I mean, I, you know, you listen to the famous climate activist, Greta Thunberg, and says, "All you can talk about is money and fairy tales of eternal economic growth." And this is how I feel, I mean, this, you know, yes, it may cost more to use electricity.
Or less.
Or less. And I, you know, I, it doesn't matter, we should do this anyway. That's how I feel.
I, I can support the, the recommendations as written. I, I think that we can give guidance as to how the exemptions should be applied to our, our staff and building inspector. Thanks.
So you're not in favor of going back to the previous recommendation for-
I, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable drafting at this point. If we find that there are too many exemptions being made, then we can go back and visit it. I mean, one question I do have with regard to restaurants, though, is that restaurant tenants can change. I mean, how can one go about making that? I, I mean, prospectively, you could end up having a restaurant that could, maybe two or three tenants down the line require it. I mean, how, how are we supposed to foresee something like that? And it's not like they can retroactively then go and create a gas line to their, to their space. So wouldn't, I, I, I mean, I, I know that's kind of arguing against the, the language as written, but, I mean, how are we supposed to prospectively anticipate something like that?
Well, to address that particular question, that would be considered a tenant improvement in an existing building. So in effect, that gas line would be there for perpetuity, in effect, unless there's another code cycle update that does address tenant improvements.
No, I think he's saying if a new restaurant's built with no gas, how does a future tenant get the gas in there? Not existing restaurants with no, that already have gas.
Again, I, I think that's not addressed in this, in this reach code, the way it's currently drafted. We're just looking at newly constructed buildings.
And what if the, what if the property owner doesn't know what restaurant's going to be in there?
They might plum it, stop it for gas.
Then what would they do? I mean-
A, a common approach in the construction industry is to build a, a cord shell building where you, you know, put that out for sort of a spec occupancy. In that case, if I, if I were that, that business operator, I would, I would take a look at constructing my, my restaurant to meet that all-electric standard, again, to achieve cost savings would, might be my primary goal.
Okay.
Does that address your question?
So if a restaurant was, a building is all-electric, and the current restaurant there is all-electric, and someone, a pizza kitchen wants to move in, they would have to do tenant improvement to add gas line to a building that has no gas line at all. It would, the cost might be prohibitively high, and then this pizza oven could never ever move in, then is that the case?
The way the ordinance is drafted is that, say that, say that building is built all-electric, and there's a restaurant operating there that's all-electric. There's nothing in the ordinance today that would require a, a future TI to either install or not install gas. That business owner would have to do the math and, and take a look at the prospect of installing a gas line, and if that cost just, is justified by what their expected business returns might be on that particular appliance.
So if we allow a more general exception, maybe when this building is constructed, the, the builder, the property owner can install potential gas lines for different, expecting different type of tenants?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The tenant improvements are not covered in this existing ordinance, the way it's drafted.
Right, so, I mean, if I were, you know, a pizza business wanting to move into a space, I would probably choose one that had natural gas and not go into one that was all-electric, and probably the owner would not be willing to spend the money to retroactively put in a gas line, and, you know, so be it.
I'll, I'll mention as well, just to keep in mind, that the building code changes in a three-year cycle. So in, in any case, we'll be bringing this back to council in about two and a half years for considerations on where the code is going. We, we fully anticipate the state building code is going towards all-electric statewide. And so, well, that will be the natural reevaluation cycle for this, which would probably cover most, most cases as we're talking about right now.
Okay, and what about ADUs? We've just been talking about commercial kitchens.
Yes, to address your question on ADUs, so staff would, would recommend that we can work with the city attorney's office. We know that there is updates to our local ordinances regarding ADUs in the city of Cupertino. We would, we would work with the city attorney's office in that process to see if and how we can incorporate electrification to those types of structures.
So why can't we do it now in the, in these reach codes?
This state law around what you can and can't do to regulate ADUs is incredibly complicated, and so we wanted to move this process forward as, as quickly as we can and bring it to council, and then analyze the ADU, you know, the application to ADUs as part of our update to the ADU ordinance.
So, wait, so are you saying the state law does not allow you to prohibit-
I don't know.
Gas?
I don't know.
State law doesn't specifically address gas in ADUs, but it has very specific requirements about what cities can or can't do on ADUs.
Didn't we just hear that other cities have made ADUs all-electric? San Jose?
Yeah.
That's true, San Jose does include ADUs in their-
Well, there you are. I'll bet they did their homework ahead of time.
Well, I do support that for ADU, we should go all-electric. So can we do it here with this code or not?
Our recommendation had been, had been because the city's already doing an update of all the ordinances that apply to ADUs, that we do it as part of that process.
That doesn't make sense because that process has to do with the size and other parameters, not the reach code, right? Shouldn't we do this as part of reach code?
Could, could, could the city attorney's office evaluate this between the first and second reading? Would that be possible?
We would have to do it-
I mean, what are you doing, what are you doing over the holiday? We're not meeting for another month, right?
We could-
Sorry.
Yes.
I, I don't mean to be-
No, that's fair enough. Yeah, we could do the evaluation, propose amendments if it's possible, but the, when we return, it would have to be another first reading, and then followed by a second reading, the meeting after that.
I mean, is there any downside in delaying this until we can get something that's more in line with what we've been talking about here? I mean, I, I mean, I just can't imagine why this wasn't already considered.
It's just a matter of timing. The state energy codes do go into effect in January, and there are provisions that we're making modifications to, for example, on the EV piece of it.
Can we amend it to the proceedings after?
Yes, we can amend it later to, to address ADUs.
Perhaps we could approve what we have tonight, direct staff to come up with language to apply to ADUs if possible, and bring that back as an amendment as soon as possible.
Okay, can we also-
Recommendation.
Can we also consider an outdoor, so that the code applies to outdoor appliances? Possibly outdoor barbecue?
Yeah, I think we could make that modification tonight, and, and we did have a, a recommendation on the language and the definition to include, where it says including pools and spas, to say, including indoor or, or outdoor pools and spas.
It could be outdoor kitchen, someone could have-
And kitchens as well.
Outdoor kitchen.
So you're going to table it?
Yeah.
Are we, are we ready for a motion?
I would like to table it. This is just not ready.
Well, I-
I mean, we're going to start doing amendments to it because, I mean, I, I can go either way, but I hate to pass something and then immediately do amendments to fix it. It just doesn't seem like the right way to do it.
You know, when, when does the ADU stuff come back?
Sorry, could you give me one moment to confer with council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right, we can take a little break while they're conferring.
Can I ask a question about the encouragement for existing buildings to convert? So, do we, is there currently a program to do that?
Can you wait until they finish conferring?
Okay.
Let's take a couple of minutes while they confer. All right. Councilwoman Chow, oh, you're here. Councilmember Sinks. So, what did our city attorney find out?
Okay, so to summarize, staff believes we can make modifications today to satisfy council, council's requests, and so the first one we heard was outdoor gas appliances. So, including the definition of an all-electric building to include outdoor gas appliances such as pools, spas, and outdoor fireplaces. Second modification, and kitchens, excuse me. Second modification would be to adopt the modification process, as we discussed, for commercial restaurants. And the third would be to adopt all-electric for standalone ADUs, newly constructed. And we can make those modifications today. And Ellison can elaborate a little bit more.
Sure. Just on the ADU question, there are some provisions of state law that are not entirely straightforward as to how they apply to ADUs. And what we had decided was, when we looked at this issue, was because the city was doing an update of its ADU ordinance in multiple ways, that was coming back in, in February, we thought we would just address this as part of that process. But what we can do, because if the council wants to, is provide in here that the exemption for ADUs would not apply to standalone newly constructed ADUs, and if there are any changes that we would recommend as part of the ADU update process, we can do it at that time.
Okay, so in terms of the commercial kitchens, I'm not sure we have, I know, Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Paul were not in favor of that, that change, no, but I don't know about Councilmember Willie. So it's two to two, as I see it now. No pressure.
Well, let's just say I was feeling a little left out. I was waiting for my turn.
Okay. Okay.
So, I do feel that we are in a, in kind of a crisis situation with the climate change, and delaying things and not taking significant steps, I think, is, is not appropriate at this time. If there are some minor issues that would still need to be addressed, to me, that's not reason to delay the important decisions. not reason to delay the important decisions. So, I do think my first choice is what we have already in front of us. I'm not really hearing what I consider to be enough compelling to change that, in the sense that a few exceptions, okay, you know, being somewhat flexible, we are treading in new territory for Cupertino. We're relying on the superficial part to copy some of the other communities without really having our own experience. And so, I think by allowing a few of the exceptions, the way they are, and monitoring them, and that as we go forward, we're gonna need to be doing a lot more to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. And hopefully, we and city staff really starts making this a major task, so that we can truly be at the forefront. Cupertino, the home of Apple, we don't want to be waiting for everybody else to determine what's the right thing and then we'll copy them. I mean, let's be leaders and move forward. So, my first choice is, if we have the support, let's go with what we've got. Make these additions for the ADUs and outside cooking places and pools and stuff, and move forward at this time, and if we do need something else, whether it's already determined or something comes up between now and the second reading, and if an amendment is needed, so that we get this one taken care of and not keep this thing, you know, circulating.
Okay, so, just, you do understand that what we have now does allow all those exceptions for commercial kitchens? That's not what we had originally. It got changed.
Because of the feedback from?
From, I guess, one person.
One person.
One person.
He works with many restaurant owners. And I think there are, we are a small city. There are San Jose, I think they are not like all strict, that strict. So, yeah, we are moving in the right direction, but then we are a city that, it has been very hard to operate a restaurant in our city. So, I just hope to be considerate of that. Yeah, we want to do all that we can, but.
Well, I wonder if you could put up the language, because I'm not, I just want to make sure John is, understands.
Right, what we're, yeah. So, put on what you removed at the request of a single person.
Well, that language in the extra slide. So, John, right now, as the proposal sits, this language is not in. If we want to go a little farther, what we do is we say, dear commercial kitchen builder, right, dear architect, here's a process whereby you could get an exemption. If we don't put this in, what we have is a blanket exemption. And that's the question for you, is what do you want to do? Because it seems like we have consensus otherwise.
Right, I think, yeah, so, so far Rod and I do not want the blanket exemption.
We like this language.
And apparently, Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Paul do want the blanket exemption.
Right.
So, that's two to two. So, yeah, that's the question, do you want the blanket exemption, or do you want what was originally proposed?
I guess I'm kind of in the middle. I support some kind of exception that people have to apply for, so that it's not blanket. However, I don't, I feel this current exception is very limited. It's only limited to, like, pizza kitchen. And then, this is supposed to be, I think someone said hardship exception. Hardship means we are making exemption when it's economic hardship, but that's not included here.
It doesn't say hardship. This is the, this is the language that we'd put in the ordinance if we would, we get a majority to agree.
And then also, because without, with this kind of exception, I guess, if a building is built all-electric, then it's very hard for anyone to install, convert a kitchen to gas, then.
So, that's true, that would limit the businesses that could rent, yeah. Sorry, John. Go ahead.
So, it seems to me that the line, examples include barbecue-themed restaurants and pizza ovens, seems to convey that the exceptions are very, very limited. If you remove that sentence, so the request is based on a business-related reason to cook with a flame that cannot be reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source, the building official may grant this modification if he finds there is a business-related reason. This need cannot be reasonably achieved with electric, and the applicant has employed reasonable methods to mitigate. So, that one sentence in there, that just, I'm afraid can be misconstrued by the building official, oh, you're not doing pizzas, you're not doing.
Yeah, that's fine, I would be happy with removing that example line.
I mean, they're just examples, and we could add to them, I suppose.
No, let's just remove.
It's easier for an official to.
Sure, let's strike it.
May I make another suggestion?
Sure.
A commonly, you can use language include but are not limited to, so that it helps provide guidance to applicants and the building official about what we're talking about, but makes clear that it's not limited to those exceptions, that there's other types of restaurants that could qualify. So, that's another potential option.
I'm happy either way.
Yeah, I can go either way as well.
If John feels more comfortable striking it, I'd go there.
Which do you feel, John? I'm happy to strike it, or I'm happy to say, but not limited to? Either one?
Like I said, I just think it leaves, I didn't quite understand that.
But are not limited to, not, okay.
Look at the, you want to highlight?
Including but not limited to, well.
Okay, that's fine, including, that's fine, yeah.
It's no longer a sentence. It should be include, include but are not limited to.
Yeah. But still, the language is very vague. What does it mean business-related reason? And what does it mean reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source? Who decides what's reasonable or not? And what's considered, what's the range of reasonable? The building official will decide?
Yeah, but, you know, six months from now, you know, our discussion here is water under the bridge, and turnover on inspectors, and then an inspector puts this in front of him and he sees the verbiage pizza ovens, and then he's faced with a Chinese restaurant. And it, no, no, I mean, this is meant for pizza ovens, you know, and unfairly prevents someone from doing something very similar, you know, it's a way of cooking or something. And so, I would just be concerned that it could be.
So, you want to strike that?
Yeah, we've shown the modification, striking it on the screen now.
Just strike it.
Yep, and then. Striking it's fine.
There, now I'm much better.
And then still, what is the business-related reason to cook with a flame? This is very vague.
It's that you can't cook, it's like maybe Korean barbecue, right? Where you cook at your table, you probably couldn't do that.
That's true.
With electricity, that's a business reason, but it's not.
Well, you can do.
A reason is not, oh, it costs me less to use gas.
Korean barbecue, you can cook that with electricity too.
Or another example is that they don't provide electric wood fire stoves for pizzas yet.
Right.
Well, I don't know, you know, I'm not a chef, but I do know at home that gas is instant hot, instant hot, where.
Yeah, induction does, I was in Assemblymember Mark Stone's office today, and he's got a massive, he's a great cook, and he put an induction and he said, I can't believe it, I was in love with gas and now I have this thing, and it's better, right? So, it's faster, it'll boil water faster, and, yeah.
Okay, so, we took out the examples. Yeah, business-related reason, that's a little bit vague. Someone could, someone could come and say, well, it's gonna cost me, you know, 10 cents more per meal to cook with electricity versus gas. Is that a business reason for an exception, or not?
Coupled with number two. The need cannot be reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source.
Okay.
I think, though, the overall issue that we're dealing with versus the very, very, very small number that would be dealing with this one, I think, by all means, let's move forward with the significance of what we're, you know, gonna be doing for the community here.
Okay.
So, let us summarize.
Right.
And also, that if a building initially has certain kind of kitchen, and then that's electric, but then another restaurant with different kind that might have a business reason to cook with flame will not ever be able to move in, because the cost of converting will be very high, so.
Right, that's true. It would be very high to convert.
I think the market will figure this out.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm confident that an owner that really feels very strongly about gas can, where there's not a demonstrated immediate need, the people building out the worm shell will probably plum gas and stub it out for one owner and then be able to provide it for the next one.
Right, I mean, this, the way this reads, it doesn't prevent, unless I'm reading it wrong, it doesn't prevent a gas line to the building, it just prohibits.
Right.
Gas-fuel cooking appliances. So, sure, a building owner wants to put in the gas line just in case.
So, they can put it in.
Go for it. Hopefully, not.
I think the other consideration is this blanket exemption we're doing based on economics, right? So, I think, I think our business owners and builders ought to feel pretty comfortable about this in the end.
Okay.
With the blanket exception also, since building with only electric actually is cheaper than building with electric and gas line. So, even if we have the blanket exception, a builder won't really put it in unless he or she feel it's really necessary, right?
Yeah, we're giving them that discretion.
Even if it's blanket.
We're giving them that choice.
But then they will only put it in if they really feel.
Right, so if they feel they, it would profit them in the future to be able to rent to a restaurant that required gas, they can put it in, if they thought, heck, if one restaurant leaves, it'll just be another one that can use induction, and we'll have to let that pizza restaurant or whatever go somewhere else.
Actually, Mayor, let me clarify on that particular point. So, the definition of all-electric building, again, is that there's no gas plumbed into that building. So, if there is a, this is a target exception for if the business owner is able to make these three cases to supply gas to that particular appliance. So, I hope that clarifies your.
Okay, so, I guess, reading it, it's not clear, because it says you can't install cooking appliances, it doesn't say you can't run gas to the building. Or is that somewhere else, that you can't run gas to the building?
Right, that's the definition of an electric, of an all-electric building, and all buildings must be built all-electric, and that would include or exclude piping, gas piping in the building.
But surely, if we can allow an exemption for these good reasons, we could also allow an exemption to the person constructing to allow a gas stub.
I was just commenting on the mayor's statement that a contractor could just plum gas just in case, that's, that would not be allowed. They'd have to demonstrate that there's a particular appliance that can only be supplied.
No, not plum gas into each appliance, but at the edge of the building, have a gas line, and you're saying you can't even have it on the street by that building? So, you can put in a gas line in the future?
You wouldn't be able to build it into the building.
I think what we're asking for is maybe a change to the language slightly, to say, provisioning, right, for some future restaurant use where this, where these exemptions might be granted, is something we would like to allow, because we know, I mean, Darcy commented, we want some flexibility, so that if there's a future use that can't be anticipated right now, is that possible?
So, I think, sorry, the way the ordinance is written right now, a building, someone building a new building could have gas lines to the, to the edge of the building, but not within, within the building itself. And then, if they wanted to install gas-fuel cooking at that point, they would need to be able to demonstrate compliance with these requirements in the modification.
Right, and in that case, the gas lines, if they put them in the building, would not be inside the walls, they'd be, you know, like it is in your garage now, where the, it's external.
Practically speaking, I think that hypothetical future, you know, tenant improvement would have to have a very good use case.
Oh, yes, yeah, agree.
Sure. And we know that technology's improving all the time, so pizzas may be heated by, pizza ovens may be electric in the future, right?
So, can I sum up the modifications that I heard? So, first modification on the definition of electric buildings. So, electric buildings definition modified to read, an all-electric building is a building that has no natural gas or propane plumbing installed within the building that uses electricity as the sole source of energy for its space heating, water heating, including indoor, outdoor pools and spas, cooking appliances, and kitchens and fireplace, outdoor kitchens and fireplaces, clothes drying appliances. All-electric buildings may include solar thermal pool heating. Second modification to the reading today would be striking exception three for kitchens located with non-residential buildings and replaced with the language that's in front of you here. And modification number three would be to strike, strike exception five?
As of right now.
For ADUs, effectively including accessory dwelling units in the standalone accessory dwelling units in the all-electric requirement.
I'd move this item as stated.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think you need to modify it to make it an exemption for existing junior ADUs and ADUs, not to strike it altogether.
So, modification, sorry.
Pull up the language and add the word existing in front of it. I mean, just pull up the section if you can. It's exemption five.
Except, yeah, exception five, is there a?
Or exception five. Right, so, I mean, as written, I guess existing is already, maybe you're correct, existing is already understood to be exempted, right, from the?
Right, there's.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
So, one more, one more.
I guess it's just a matter of.
One more thing regarding additions. I mean, I'm not talking about single-family home, I am talking about additions to multifamily or non-residential building. How are they defined? I know single-family home has specific building codes to define what's considered a renovation, remodel, considered new, but how about a non-residential building, they decide they'll cover the parking lot, build on top of the parking lot to add additional building, but it's attached somehow? That should apply, the all-electric. additional building, um, but it's attached somehow. That should apply, the, all-electric should apply there. So how would that be defined here?
So are you talking about something connected to an existing building?
Could be connected, so they can claim it's not separate new?
No, is that, that must be covered in the ordinance somewhere.
It's an addition to an existing building, but it might be a significant addition, not just like a 1ADU.
Right. I mean, you could have an eight hundred square foot house and put a, you know, fifteen hundred square foot addition on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, that, that's a point well taken, but the, um, the modification to the energy code, uh, pretty much restricts us to looking at newly constructed structures, um, for the reasons stated earlier, that we need to, uh, gain approval from the California Energy Commission, that this is, um, a, a modification that has been proven to be cost-effective. The case that you're addressing, uh, there's been no study that we can point to that an addition to an existing building, uh, can be electrified using this method.
But it's more, it's a pretty independent addition, right? So there is no, so could you look into that?
Staff, staff doesn't see a way to do that in the, in the, uh, modification to the local amendment, uh, today, but staff can certainly research that.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we should look at that in the future because I know there are people that do add additions to their homes that are way, way bigger than the existing, you know, property.
It is complicated by the requirement to do a cost-effectiveness analysis and a lot of the cost-effectiveness analysis is driven by the fact that new buildings don't need to use gas infrastructure. And so if you've already got gas infrastructure in your building there, then it, it changes the, the balance. So it's just something that requires a little bit more
Right, okay, that's fine. We can address that later.
What I mean is, for example, the addition is defined, it's building on top of currently vacant thing, maybe it's not on top of the existing building, but attached next to an existing existing building, but maybe on top of a parking lot. So it really doesn't need the existing gas infrastructure. It actually will need additional infrastructure to connect with gas. That's the kind of addition I would like to define.
In the situation you're describing, that would probably be considered a newly constructed structure, building and be required.
But then they can somehow attach it with a wall. It could share a wall. How is that defined?
Can we just have staff follow up on that later?
Yeah, just follow up on that. We're thinking of all these, um, weird possibilities, which actually should be considered because somebody will take advantage of it, whether, um, and some people, yeah, it, it's not out of the question.
I'd like to say thank you for including the feedback received and staff response in the staff report. That's really nice because a lot of the quest, people's questions answered in the staff report.
Okay, so we are ready for the first reading?
I would move, uh, this as stated by Andre, the, the banning outdoor uses, um, including this lim, more limited exemption with the process for commercial kitchens and also the ban in standalone ADUs.
Great. So.
But maybe there's a second.
Sure. Yeah, she has to, yeah, I'll second, but we have to conduct the first reading.
This is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine three in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code Chapter sixteen point five four and sixteen point five eight, adopting the twenty nineteen California Energy Code and Green Building Standards Code with certain exceptions, deletions, modifications, additions, and amendments as per, as amendments as per stated by Councilmember Sinks.
Okay.
Yep, you ready?
We vote?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I, I seconded it already. Okay, we'll vote.
Aye.
No, we're not, this is fixed now, so you can vote.
Oh, fixed? Okay.
Yeah, that's real good. Motion carries unanimously.
Yay.
There's a resolution as well.
Okay. So we have to also adopt the resolution, right? Okay.
Yes.
I move that we adopt resolution number nineteen dash one forty-six, a resolution making factual findings with respect to local geological, topographical, and climatic conditions necessary to make local amendments to the California Building Standards Code.
Great. Second vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Yay. Okay, we are on to item eleven, consider adoption of an urgency ordinance under California Government Code Section three six nine three seven to implement tenant eviction protections and limit large rental rate increases effective immediately to avoid circumvention of AB fourteen eighty-two, the Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen, and find that the adoption of the ordinance is not a project under and exempt from SEQA. So can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Seth Peta from the City Attorney's Office. Nice to see you all again. So at the December third council meeting, some comments were received by the council and in response, the council directed the City Attorney's Office to look into the feasibility of drafting for potential adoption and urgency ordinance under the Government Code Section that allows for, for such urgency ordinances, that would cover the remaining weeks of twenty nineteen before a state law known as AB fourteen eighty-two or the Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen takes effect on January first, twenty twenty. Skip ahead, I'll come back to that, that, that slide in a moment. The, uh, Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen was, was signed into law by the governor on October eighth. It goes into effect January first of this coming year. It contains two main provisions. It contains a just cause eviction provision and it contains a rent cap provision. I'll just summarize both, each of those very briefly. So the, the rent cap would put a cap on rent increases that would prevent landlords from raising rents by more than five percent per year, plus the percent change in the cost of living, or more than, or ten percent, whichever of those two is lower. Uh, the increase is tied to the annual April Bay Area Consumer Price Index or CPI. Uh, the April twenty nineteen Bay Area CPI increase was four percent, which would make a maximum rent increase of nine percent possible, once AB fourteen ninety-two becomes effective. The just cause eviction provision, uh, protects tenants who have lived in a unit for twelve months or more, or if additional persons have been added to the lease, at least one tenant must have lived in the unit for twelve months. Just cause means that landlords cannot terminate a tenancy except for one of the reasons listed in the statute, such as non-payment of rent, violation of lease terms, et cetera. The state law also creates a category of allowable no-fault evictions, such as where the owner or a member of the owner's family wants to move into the unit, the owner intends to remove the unit from the market, or the owner intends to demolish or substantially remodel it. The legislation requires landlords to pay one month's rent as relocation assistance whenever a tenant is evicted for no fault, regardless of the tenant's income or other characteristics. So, uh, when this law was signed, it left a several-month gap between its signage and effectiveness where, um, there, there appears to be evidence that landlords have taken advantage of this gap to raise rent beyond that nine percent or ten percent cap, um, or evict their, uh, their tenants, um, while they're still allowed to do so. So the council asked us to look at a stopgap measure in the form of an urgency ordinance to, to prevent that, those occurrences before the, the January first, um, deadline. So an urgency ordinance under the Government Code requires four of your votes, or five. Uh, the ordinance must be necessary to preserve the peace, peace, health, and safety in Cupertino and the findings, uh, on those facts must be set forth in the ordinance. Several other jurisdictions around the state have, have passed such ordinances. A few are listed here in this region, others around the state, including Los Angeles and Long Beach have done so as well. So the ordinance is attached to the staff report. It includes the nine percent rent cap that I mentioned earlier. Uh, it would be in effect really for the remaining two weeks of this year. So it would expire by its own terms on December thirty first, twenty nineteen, after which the state law would take effect. And I, I didn't mention one, uh, interesting aspect about the state law, which I believe the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, which is that the rent cap provision reaches back upon its effective date to March fifteenth of twenty nineteen, meaning that if a landlord has raised the rent from that date through the end of this year beyond the, the amount that the state law allows, on January first, the, the rent will be rolled back to what it, what it was on March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, plus the actual allowable increase. So it's retroactive in that regard. The just cause provision, however, is not retroactive. We have, um, analyzed, uh, several different approaches by looking at other jurisdictions ordinances. Some have taken, uh, an approach whereby neither provision is retroactive. Some have just made the, um, the rent cap provision retroactive like this, like the state law does, um, by about two months, so going back to about the October, November timeframe. Um, and some have, uh, made both provisions retroactive, such as Menlo Park. We're, we're putting before you today one that is not retroactive, but you can, you can, uh, discuss the, the notion of making it retroactive if you like. That concludes my report.
Okay, I have, um, a bunch of speaker cards on this item. Um, first is, um, Sujatha V., followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Neil. Welcome, Sujatha.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Sujatha Venkateshaman from West Valley Community Services. I want to, um, thank the staff and especially the City Attorney's Office to put this ordinance as an urgency ordinance. Um, as they mentioned, that it protects the tenants, but it definitely protects low-income families. Um, our data is included in the staff report, but we, in the last three months, saw a forty percent in, increase in rental assistance requests. Um, so we think that there was, um, some of this that was already going on and our clients were facing, um, that, uh, that financial burden and they were coming to us. So, um, we have supported the AB fourteen eighty-two because we think it prevents eviction, um, it prevents homelessness, so we were in support of that, so, uh, we would be in support of this, uh, urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Neil, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Connie.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, and City Attorney. I also want to thank you very much for, um, taking the time and the very thoughtful approach to, um, putting this, um, urgency ordinance on the agenda for this evening. I'm Connie Cunningham. I'm a thirty-two-year Cupertino neighbor. I serve on the Housing Commission and I'm speaking for myself only in this case. Um, I am heartened to see an urgency ordinance on our agenda for tonight. State law AB fourteen eighty-two is an anti-rent gouging and against unjust evict, evictions. It is not anti-landowner. There are many property owners who aren't gouging people. It is putting in place protections for people who are extremely vulnerable to increasing rents in our region. AB fourteen eighty-two contains a retroactive provision for the rent increase protection of the bill, however, it does not contain a retroactive provision for unjust evictions. The staff report and the proposed urgency ordinance recitals make it clear that our city recognizes the threat of sudden unjust, unjust evictions to our neighbors. I am, however, disappointed that this urgency ordinance does not contain wording that would make just cause eviction rules apply retroactively, since that is the point of this effort. The use of retroactive terminology is rare in laws, but circumstances are unique for this place and time. When AB fourteen eighty-two was signed into law, some landlords took swift action to raise rents and to unjustly evict tenants. Daily City just won a suit for some tenants who were unjustly kicked out of their apartments. This ordinance needs to take swift action to stop these wrongs as well. Without the term retroactive, the support by this ordinance for just cause protections is limited to a few days between December seventeenth tonight and December thirty-first. Sparing one or more neighbors the trauma of being suddenly uprooted is our goal. Adding a retroactive provision for over three months is critical. Two weeks, three months, how many more families could be helped? Menlo Park approved an urgency ordinance that made just cause eviction protections retroactive. Their staff analysis discussed recto, retroactive, whatever, at length and concluded that it was warranted. I urge the City Council to direct the City Attorney to write a retroactive provision for just cause protections into this urgency ordinance. The ordinance must clearly state the intent to make it retroactive, make it effective tonight, and make it retroactive to the date that it was passed to the governor for his signature, September eleventh, two thousand nineteen. I thank you again for your hard work on this bill.
Okay, I have Neil, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Genevieve Kohler. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. My name is Neil. I'm a fifteen-year renter in the City of Cupertino. I'm also here on behalf of Cupertino for All to voice support for item eleven. Uh, we believe in a city that is more sustainable, equitable, and vibrant than currently is. Thank you again for agreeing to place this item on the agenda in the first place. It correctly signals that we are interested in addressing issues of housing affordability. Earlier today, our organization submitted a letter with a list of suggested amendments, copied over from Sunnyvale's language, that they ultimately did not actually end up passing. To the potential ordinance, uh, it's rooted in the fundamental belief that this ordinance must include retroactive language dated back to October eighteenth, or will essentially be worthless symbolic allyship of renters in our city. Today is December seventeenth. That means there are just two weeks left of the month. If you pass this ordinance tonight without retroactivity, who will we really be helping? Existing California law requires a sixty-day notice for no-cost termination of a year-long lease, greater than the time left in the month before the state law kicks in anyway, and rents automatically will roll back to March twenty nineteen values come January. Now we need a Cupertino that is more equitable and inclusive than what we have now, and so I, again, grateful to, that we recognize this need. That according to one third-party rent database, rents in Cupertino have increased forty-five percent between twenty eleven and twenty fifteen, and our county's AMI has only risen by one point two percent in that same time. With such strikingly high rental costs, any increase beyond ten percent during these past few months in anticipation of AB thirteen, fourteen eighty-two by a landlord could spell certain failure to pay for many failures and a subsequent eviction notice. But like mentioned earlier, our forty percent renter population needs more help than simply virtue signaling. Cupertino has a special chance to lead where others have hesitated, like Sunnyvale, and let's not miss it again. Please consider the suggested retroactivity amendments, like other Bay Area cities already have, so that tenants can at least have some kind of leverage in the courtroom, um, when they have an unlawful detainer filed against them, because we're really looking at existing evictions that have happened in the past several months. Um, and even if just one person ends up utilizing the retroactivity, that's one family that we could really be saving, and ultimately this becomes state law in a couple of weeks anyway, so what's the real harm in that case? Um, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Genevieve Kohler. Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, hello, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I rented for twelve years, uh, in West San Jose Cupertino before I bought my home. Um, I find it very, very interesting that Mr. Chu wrote this bill, the one that we're talking about, um, AB one four eighty-two, and he is a CASA person. Also, he is also one of the people that brought us AB sixty-eight and AB sixty-nine, which allows ADUs in apartment complexes. Now, why is Mr. Chu writing bills like this? Has he taken over control of California along with some other, Mr. Weiner, the lady that brought us SB three thirty? Um, I find it very, very strange that we are having, that my city is having to scramble in the middle of my city is having to scramble in the middle of December to try to clean up stuff that Mr. Chu presented to cause problems in the state, when he is notorious for the CASA group that went to Washington, D.C. in December of last year, and he presented at the CASA. And that is the direct reason why we have these housing bills. So Mr. Chu has presented us with AB one four eighty-two and caused mayhem, and he's also presented us with AB sixty-eight and AB sixty-nine, which may be good for ADUs in backyards and with no gas lines, but why in the world would you want to have an ADU in an apartment complex? Nobody is talking about that. What is the ulterior motive? Why is Mr. Chu diddling in state politics and affecting us at the city level over the holidays? I think we need to have a big investigation into why the CASA crew are trying to subvert and take over the state. I don't... I think it's awful for renters to be thrown out. Yes, rent control is good. It may be bad. I'm very familiar with San Francisco, where Mr. Chu is... he has his constituency there. My mother-in-law lived there for many, many years. It's a complicated situation, but San Francisco is not Cupertino or San Jose. So I am looking at the big picture of why is Mr. Chu involved in writing all these bills that are causing the city and renters and tenants big problems? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Last, I have Genevieve Kohler. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Genevieve Kohler, and I represent Deansville College students on the foot... on the foot on Deansville Board of Trustees, but I'm here as myself and as an advocate for students and vulnerable community members, urging you to retroactively apply these renters' protections to the time when the law was signed and recognized as necessary and right, to provide a little bit of justice and dignity for people like myself who are affected by no-cause evictions. I came here before, and I told you about my experience. In June, I was evicted with less than two weeks' notice, and there was no cause for eviction. They said they wanted to raise rent, but then they wouldn't accept proof of income because they'd already made up their mind about our eviction. Under the incoming renters' protections, my eviction would have been unlawful, but at the time, we were scrambling to figure out if we had any kind of legal protection, and there was none. Signing in the retroactive renters' protections would help people like myself. A few months ago, I spoke here about the devastating impact of the housing crisis on Deansville College students. There were tens of thousands of students in the past academic year who experienced housing insecurity, who struggled with housing affordability, paying rent. They moved often. They stayed in unhealthy or abusive or legally uninhabitable situations in order to be able to afford to live here. Housing insecurity makes it impossible to focus on academics, or work, or taking care of your family. It's entirely destabilizing, and with no protections for Cupertino renters, you left us to fend for ourselves while other cities and counties did better. Now, starting in January, we have to protect our renters, but today, you have the chance to stand by local students and the countless Cupertino residents whose lives have been disrupted by a lack of common sense renters' rights. I urge you to retroactively apply the renters' protections to the date that they were signed into law, the day that they were recognized as necessary and right in October of 2019. This won't change the experiences of those who have already been affected by no-cause evictions and lack of rent control, but it will offer a chance of justice for the most vulnerable members of the Cupertino population, and it may prevent further no-cause evictions before January first. Thank you.
Okay, I have two more cards now. Dashal Leeds, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds, Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I'd like to speak in support of the tenant protections as well. The speakers before me have really eloquently described the issue, and I think this is really important, both as a social justice issue, but also as a climate justice issue as well, because oftentimes, when we kick people out, they still have to commute to work, and they're going to commute even longer, so it makes their lives more difficult and increases the carbon in the atmosphere. I'd also like to support including retroactive language in the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, last, I have Kitty Moore.
Good evening. I'm representing myself only. Thank you for putting this on the agenda so quickly and getting to it before the end of the year. I just have a couple of questions. One, I believe I read thirty-seven percent rental units are in Cupertino. Thirty percent... thirty-seven percent of our housing, we rented. And then, I'm concerned here for the applicability of AB fourteen eighty-two, because it says it exempts housing units that were constructed in the previous fifteen years. Some of the other exemptions include college dormitories, deed-restricted affordable housing, single-family homes and condominiums, duplexes where the owner lives in one of the units, hotels and transient occupancies. I can follow that part. I'm just kind of wondering, out of the thirty-seven percent, once we've taken all these exemptions out, what percentage of our housing stock is being affected by fourteen eighty-two? That's just a data point I'd like to know. Also, it says it's retroactive to March, which begs the question of who would be excessively increasing their rents when the law was signed in October. So that... I'm curious about that. Like, how did they know that this was coming down the pipes in order to start increasing the rent? And I was surprised that for Cupertino, it's actually nine percent for the rent cap increase. I thought it was five percent, but then you're adding the Consumer Price Index, I believe, of four percent, and you're getting to a nine percent cap. So that is disappointing. I thought it was going to be more restrictive. And I would like to hear more about the eviction part and the request to make it retroactive to October. I just want to make sure, you know, that you have the law of unintended consequences. Unintended consequences. So please, you know, make sure that we aren't going to be hitting that. And also, if it's retroactive to March, is there anything... does that have any effect on the eviction portion? And anyway, overall, I agree with the request, and I... the October 2019 suggestion seems reasonable as well, but I just want to make sure that you have a nice, lengthy discussion about that. Thank you.
Okay, so that's all the cards I have. So we can bring it back to council. I will go first. So I'm willing to vote for this. I'm willing to make it retroactive, but I still want to say that, and one speaker pointed this out, it's amazing that all these cities are here trying to fix fourteen eighty-two when there is just no way that the author could not have foreseen the effect of not making the eviction controls go into effect until January first, but having the rent cap retroactive to March. It's just inconceivable. I don't know... I can imagine the special interests that forced him to put that in there, but it's just, you know, it's bad that all these cities have to fix what these bad actors in Sacramento have created. And, I mean, not unexpected. We see this in other bills, SB... SB three thirty, and SB... SB... SB five is all... not SB five. Anyway, right, SB fifty, which is coming. And anyway, so I'm willing to do this. I would point out that the nine percent rent cap, which for Cupertino... you know, for Cupertino, the five percent plus CPI, in September, according to the website Rent Cafe, rents in Cupertino fell by 1.8%. In October, they fell by 0.7%. And yet, this bill is almost telling property owners, hey, the default that you should be raising the rent is nine percent, because you can't ever go back and reclaim... it's... you can't bank it, like you can in San Francisco with rent control. If you don't raise it one year, you can bank that increase for future years. So it discourages landlords from always raising it by the max, but this bill doesn't. This bill, if you don't use it, you lose it, and if you have big repairs in the future, it doesn't matter, you can never raise the rent to try to get that money back. And I fear we're going to end up with what's happening in Mountain View. After they pass rent control, you have all these owners that say, hey, I'm going to do an Ellisack conversion. I'm going to change this naturally affordable housing into luxury condos, and the city has no choice but to go along with it. And to be honest, the city probably likes it because they're getting a lot more tax revenue from that new housing that's going to be assessed at market value. So I'm willing to vote for this. I'm just disappointed that we've been put in this situation, and that's how I feel. Thank you. Ron.
Let me see if I understand this correctly. Thirteen days from now or thereabouts is of January first. This bill applies to all of Cal... this new law applies to all of California, and rents will have to be revert to rent as of March first of 2019, plus the increment that's allowed, right?
That's correct.
Well, there's a nuance there. That's only if they were increased beyond what fourteen eighty-two will allow in the past, what, nine or ten months? If there is an increase that is within what fourteen eighty-two allows, then that will remain.
So help me understand what the practical effect is of us taking this action tonight as presented in the staff report, and then retroactively applying it to the day in October that the Governor signed it. What changes here?
So those seem like two different questions, or two hypotheticals?
Yes. I'd like you to answer both of those.
Okay, so go ahead.
If we enact tonight with the language in the staff report, what's the practical consequence of that?
If you act tonight with no retroactivity, then for the remaining two weeks, you, on the one hand, for the just cause aspect of the bill, you prevent or discourage landlords from issuing eviction notices within these last two weeks.
Okay, and so that could happen because come January, they might like to have a new tenant in at forty percent increase in rent. Is that the idea?
Yes, and I should point out, or...
Or twenty...
Regardless of the renting...
Something higher than they would... yeah.
Yes, and the important thing there is that the state law is not retroactive as to evictions, and so there is kind of a legal question about whether... if the notice was served before January first, 2020, if that is actually still going to be effective after January first.
Okay, and if we do this to October, what's retroactive to October? What... I mean, okay, I get the just cause evictions, right? And Genevieve talked about her situation last summer, which this couldn't affect, I guess, because once you're evicted, you're gone. We can't change that, I guess. But if we make this retroactive to October, what's the effect of that versus doing it tonight? Making it effective tonight?
Oh, so in either case, it would be effective tonight, immediately, upon passage as an urgency ordinance. So one option, which is the one before you, is to adopt it tonight, immediately effective through January... through December thirty-first, but it would only be forward-looking. So it would prevent evictions or rent increases between now and December thirty-one. If you instead took a retroactive option as to either or both of those two provisions, it would look back, like the state law does, to some date in October, and I can give you a couple of options there, and say, if you've been served, tenant, with a notice to vacate or a rent increase since that date, and it's still pending, it hasn't turned into an unlawful detainer action, or you haven't... you know, the sixty days for a rent increase hasn't happened yet, then it's void if it does not comply with this law. And so...
And for a... an eviction in process, would it stop that?
Well, it depends what you mean by "in process." So the way that several jurisdictions have done this, if they've made their just cause provision retroactive, is referred to pending notices of termination. So that means a notice that has not turned into a court case yet, right, where the landlord hasn't yet filed suit. I have not seen an example of an ordinance saying, even if an unlawful detainer action's been filed, this still invalidates that court action. And I... yeah, we just haven't seen an example of that.
So if someone has been evicted and has already left, I mean, it has no effect? You can't unevict someone?
No, and I don't believe... I'm not aware, just put it that way, of any ordinance that is somehow recalling evicted tenants and putting them back in their units and evicting the person who was put in there after them.
And unlike Daly City, we don't know if this has even ever occurred in Cupertino. Obviously, no property owners have showed up here to object to this.
Well, we do have... and so the evidence supporting the urgency measure is included in the... is that what you're referring to, Mayor?
Right. Is there any evidence that this has been evictions in order to raise, you know?
There were a couple of speakers, I believe, at the December third meeting that spoke to you and spoke anecdotally of this occurring. And then, we have reached out to West Valley Community Services and included the data they provided in the ordinance and the staff report itself, saying that there has been a very unusual spike, up to double, what they normally see in requests for financial assistance for things like deposits from this time last year, which strongly indicates a correlation, and that's since September or October of this year. So that strongly indicates that there is some dramatic effect of this state law. And then, there've been a couple of Mercury News articles, one of which was included in the report, and the other was sent to the council tonight, saying this is a regional, and really a statewide, problem, and there's lots of evidence for these raises and evictions.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Chow.
I think I asked specifically for Cupertino, do we know of any cases of eviction that in any of the... from any services that's providing help for people facing eviction? Do we know of any?
I think I... when you asked a couple of days ago, or last week, I didn't know of any. We hadn't heard anything.
So we still don't know of any specific case?
It doesn't mean... but that doesn't mean it's not happening. It just means I haven't heard about it.
And if that's happening, they usually would reach out to West Valley Community Center, or...
I would think so. When people are in duress in the community, we point them to West Valley.
So the nonprofits that we know of, they don't... they don't... they just haven't seen cases in Cupertino yet?
I haven't heard of them.
Right, but that would only be low-income people that actually, you know, are using the services of West Valley. It could be someone, you know, paying $5,000 a month rent, and suddenly, they're evicted because the property owner says, hey, wait a second. I've been charging, you know, too little. I better get rid of them right away so I can raise it to market before January first.
Okay, so yours... yeah, so since the market rent is dropping, so likely, the people who are raising the rent or trying to evic... in order to raise rent, it would be someone who have been charging below market rent, but now they are just trying to get to market rent, because it's unlikely they'll charge way over market rent, because then they won't be able to rent it out since the rent is dropping.
I mean, that's kind of what I heard had happened in Daly City, is, you know, it wasn't the property owners that were charging market rent that were evicted. They'd have no reason to do that, right, because they couldn't rent it for more. It was ones that had, for whatever reason, not been charging market rent all along. It was ones that had, for whatever reason, not been charging market rent all along. Whether, for whatever reason, out of the goodness of their heart, or they, for whatever reason, they don't continually raise the rent every year to market. You know, maybe they have a good tenant, and they wanna keep them for whatever reason. So, you know.
Yeah. So if someone gets eviction notice, how many days they need to, how many days advance notice?
Typically, sixty days if they've been in here for twelve, twelve months.
For a no cause, right?
For a, for a--
I mean, if they didn't pay the rent, then they can get evicted much quicker.
I believe that's right, yes, so for no cause.
For no cause, right.
So likely, if someone gets a notice right after September 11th, they, they might still, they can, they can choose to ignore the notice and still remain there?
I don't think we should be referring to the September 11th date. It was signed into law on October 8th.
Oh, October 8th, that's right.
I think September 11th when it was sent to the governor. So, yeah, so it has been sixty days since October 8th. It's possible that, yeah, typically, a rent increase letter would say, you know, effective sixty days from now, your rent is now whatever. I don't know if the rent would be due on that date or due later in the month. A landlord under the just cause provision regarding evictions could, I suppose, initiate the eviction action, the unlawful detainer, after the accrual of those days or during some period after that.
So, sounds like the ones who would be really trying to evict now and increase rent are the ones who actually haven't been rent gouging. They have been charging below market rate rent, and now they are just trying to become comparable with other people who have been rent gouging. So I think I basically support that we want to do what we can to help people who are vulnerable. I think West Valley Community Service will be and have been providing help with down payment and deposit and rent assistance. This is the kind of help that will be really helpful. However, I think AB 1847, is that the number?
1487.
Oh, 14, AB 1482 is the wrong solution. It's a band-aid to a big problem. Because I think it's, it only has rent cap for buildings that's older than fifteen years old. So that means any newer buildings, they can continue to charge higher rent. Luxurious buildings, they can continue to charge higher rent. And then this actually encourages people who have older, who are landlords, to older buildings to just renovate so that they can call it new. And then they won't be under the rent cap, right?
I mean, renovating wouldn't count. What happened in Mountain View--
So they wouldn't--
Was they tore it down, they're tearing the buildings down and building for sale housing, which they're allowed to do.
Or they can convert to condos, right?
Um, yeah, tenants in common is what happens in San Francisco.
The reason I think it's a wrong solution is housing crisis is a, it's a problem for the entire society. But rent cap means we are asking this landlord who happens to own the older buildings to somehow subsidize rent housing for certain population, when this should be a problem that we, all of us are helping, not, we shouldn't put it on certain landlord. Actually, a lot of these landlords that own older buildings, they are still paying mortgage on the homes. They are not, most of them don't own the homes free and clear. And then when you put a cap on that, they do, they do still have to pay market rate maintenance, market rate, everything. But then you are saying, oh, I'm sorry, this, you guys, these people, you are unlucky, but the rest of them, they can continue to charge higher rent. That's so unfair. A proper solution would be provide rental voucher that's funded by, by the county, by the state, so that the public is funding the substance, not a few people. And then it may be the substance can be funded by higher, those people who charge the top, top rent. Those people who charge the top rent should be the ones that subsidizing the rent, not people who own older homes.
Right. I mean, I don't disagree with you, but that's not what we're discussing.
This is a wrong solution. And then the rent, the higher rent is not caused, it's caused by the out, the rapid market growth, the office growth, that's no one wants to talk about. And we continue to build more office, bringing more people to drive out the housing crisis. So it's a wrong solution, and we are, yeah, we are trying to fix the, put a band-aid on another band-aid.
Well, I would point out that while you're right, what you say is correct. It's essentially providing subsidized housing by the property owners. However, remember that those property owners are receiving their Prop 13 protections as well.
They may or may not. We don't know.
Well, everybody--
So I think some of these property owners, they choose to invest in rental housing versus stock market. So it's basically saying, can you say this few stock, I'm sorry, you cannot raise your stock anymore, but the others--
Councilmember Chow, can we bring it back to the topic?
Yeah, let's just decide.
We can't fix the state law today.
I agree with you, the state law is flawed, and will probably result in higher housing costs, but that's not what we're debating here.
Okay. So I would, I, and I don't, I think I would like to support this ordinance, just so that at least we have something. But making it retroactive, I'm not so sure.
And can I take a moment?
Because again, I think that's not fair.
And I just want to clarify a question that was asked, if we had any examples. And I will say that council earlier today received an email from a member of the public that's writing to support the proposed ordinance and to make it retroactive. And, and that writer says, I have seen firsthand someone get a notice to vacate from their landlord who wanted to hike up the rent quite a lot. So there's just one secondhand example that I wanted to clarify was in the record.
So, but, so do you have the details, you know, who that person is, or do we know if it's accurate?
Nina Darwalat. No, we don't have any more--
No, she's a housing commissioner.
Okay, so we don't--
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that there was a comment about that, and, but there's no more details.
All right, can we move on and get other comments? Darcy?
I'll go ahead and support the ordinance as proposed, along with retroactivity to the date that the governor signed it.
Okay.
You know, I agree that it's not a perfect solution. And, you know, there are, there are some real private property interests being implicated here. But unfortunately, it's the landscape that we live in, in terms of trying to correct what's been done on the state level. And, you know, I think it's very insightful commentary that you have. It's unfortunate that we have a situation where vested economic interests are, you know, driving a lot of the conversation, but for some reason, they never really get held to account. Maybe they just have too much money. Thanks.
Yeah, basically, whoever profit from all this housing, housing rate increase, the economic boom are not being held accountable to fix the problem.
That's correct.
And we are asking a few people who are, some of them might be struggling landlord to fix this.
Okay, John?
I do support the, the item, and preference the way it's written, but if there's enough support for making it retrofact, retroactive, that's an option too.
Right, so we need four council members to make it, to change it to be retroactive, and I would favor it. Darcy said he would favor it. John, I'm not sure what you said, whether you would favor making it retroactive or not.
I would go for the retroactive for the October date that they said.
Okay, and what about John, what about Rod and Leong about retroactive?
I haven't, I don't think I've said much yet, other than ask questions, so--
Okay, wait, wait, let Rod speak. Thank you.
Yeah, philosophically, I, I think rent control has some real issues, right? And there are other ways to, to look at housing affordability, but I, given the, where we are in the year with so few days left, given that evictions have already happened, I frankly think this is a rather token action, but I'll support it, and I'll support its retroactivity. It just seems to me that, given what's happening January first, right, rent increases roll, roll back if they were above that limit, and it doesn't seem to me like we're, we're going to protect anybody that we've heard of from unjust eviction. But, you know, I think it's, it's fine to send this, this symbol.
Right, it's symbolic. I think we all agree it's symbolic.
So be it.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I agree. It is hard in the context of all of this to, to develop a coherent housing policy for the state. And I think these people in Sacramento are doing what they know how to do, which often to us feel like pretty crude solutions.
So--
But, but, you know, I think, I think it's appropriate to, to support this action and the retroactivity, so I will vote yes.
Okay.
So if we, I'm trying to understand what's the impact when it's retroactive. So if it's retroactive, that means people who raised the rent beyond the nine percent for this year since, from their March-based rent, will, but, but by January first, they would have to revert back to March plus nine percent, right? So then we are talking about potentially a landlord who might have raised the rent beyond March, let's say fifteen, March plus fifteen percent since same March. What does that mean? Does the landlord have to refund the rent to the renter?
Not since March, since the retroactive date.
Since October 8th, okay. So, so let's say since October 8th, they raised the rent beyond March plus fif, that's say, March plus fifteen percent. Does the landlord have to refund the rent?
The six percent?
To the--
I mean, if it's asserted by the--
To the renter?
By the renter, it would seem so.
And like I said, likely, this is the landlord that has been charging below market rate rent. Because if the landlord has been charging market rate rent, likely he or she won't need to increase that much. So we are saying that--
Well, they wouldn't be able to.
Well, sorry, landlord with a good heart all along, now you are just, too bad, you shouldn't be so kind. That's what we are saying to them?
Yes.
I can clarify--
To make a gesture?
Yeah, go.
So the state law actually has a provision in the rent cap section that specifically says if the tenant has paid the, an increase in rent by some margin that is not allowed by 1482, they do not, they do not get it back.
Okay.
And, but, but, but that's, that's not copied over to any of these local ordinances because the ordinances all go back only two months to when the rent notice was, increase notice was served. So we're not dealing with situations in, with these ordinances where someone has already paid the rent increase because it won't have been due yet. So here, we're talking about going back to October 18th, which is sixty days prior to today.
So what you're saying is somebody who pays their rent with one of these notices, from now to the end of the year, might get a break, maybe.
Right.
And then all of this expires come January first.
Well, the local ordinance expires and the state law takes over. Yeah.
Right.
Did you say the 18th or the 8th? Because I thought you--
Well, so the, the bill was signed on, on the 8th. The 18th is sixty days prior to today. You know, Cupertino's acting more than sixty days after the law took effect. And so I, I'm not aware of any other ordinance that goes back with a retroactivity provision beyond, I'm sorry, two months.
Sixty days, right.
Because then by that point, the renter could possibly have paid the rent, and then you get into this tricky situation of do they have to repay or do they not?
Oh, so are you saying that rent increases need to be noticed for sixty days in order for them to be effective?
Typically, yeah.
So your suggestion would be go back sixty days from tonight to when the, or sixty days minus one or something?
Yeah, and that's what other, or other cities do as well.
So we are trying to give a break for someone who likely have been getting a break for years. And we are saying, sorry, your landlord now is just trying to increase it to market rate, and we, we think you, you should continue to get two months more break?
No, no, it's really not a break for more than two weeks.
Because a landlord who has been charging market rate rent would not have to increase beyond nine percent CP.
Right, but the only, the only effective period for these rent increases would be between now and the end of the year, because the landlord would have had to have noticed on the 18th or the 19th of October, and then it would be implemented about now. And the only difference is that, is that if it goes beyond nine percent of what the base rent was, then that is, that excess is not effective for the next fourteen days. So it's, I mean, I, I, I would go ahead and, you know, I, I would go ahead and make a motion to adopt the urgency ordinance as written, retroactive to sixty days prior to today, which I think is actually October 19th, but maybe I'm not calculating it correctly.
Well, because of, okay.
And for clarity's sake--
It is October 20th, then.
For clarity's sake, could we put the language up on the screen, just so that that's in the record of the exact language that's being adopted?
Uh, yeah. And if somebody wants to actually rec, just to triple-check, recalculate the sixty days if there seems to be some disagreement about what date that is, maybe we should do that.
I mean, there's, there's no retroactivity ordinance or provision in the, in the ordinance, so I'm not sure where that would--
Right.
--fit in.
Right, so we have proposed language that we can share.
Okay, great.
Do I want to do the reading of the ordinance while we're waiting for that language?
Oh, sure, that'd be great, thanks.
This is ordinance, ordinance number 19-2194, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino approving just cause eviction protections and rental rate limits effective immediately.
Great. For some reason, this looks a little bit different from the material that I have for--
Whoops, can you clear that red line?
There we go.
So, can all the council members hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at the, so what I'm showing you now is the, oh, thanks.
Okay, so this, as the city attorney mentioned, this is a sort of preemptively revised version in case this retroactivity issue came up.
Right, okay.
So I'm, and I apologize, there's no page numbers, that may be the problem. But if you flip to, sort of, after the, after the signatures page, there are the two, the two operative sections of the ordinance follow. So the first one is called the Exhibit A, Just Cause Eviction Protections section. And so this is all identical so far to what you've, you have in your packet. But if you flip to the, it must be on the last page of that, yep. If you go to the last page of that, that Exhibit A, then this insertion is what we're talking about. And we should just make sure we agree on the date.
Well, given that it's the 18th, the calendar's rolled over, maybe it should be the 19th, and I would so move.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, did you just--
Okay, so, I'm sorry, did you just move the...
You just moved it, right?
I moved this item with the effectiveness of October 19th.
All right.
And, and then this is, this is only the just cause provision, there's a separate provision to make the rent cap retroactive. But I can move on to that when you're ready.
Okay, go.
Okay, so then the following page is titled Exhibit B. I think this one's much shorter, so this is just two pages. Go to the very last page, and this is the insertion that you'll see in subsection G.
So I would move, this would be part of my motion, but I would change it to read December 18th.
Uh, oh, right, right.
And October 19th in G2, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay.
So the 7th, December 17th becomes the 18th and the, yeah, or the 19th.
Okay.
We're moving all the, we're bumping the dates, given that we've passed the bewitching hour.
Vote.
Okay.
The lights.
So I'd like to, I, I think in principle, I support that we want to help people so that they are more secure.
Are you voting or what?
The motion's been made already.
I'm voting no. That's why I'd like to give a reason that I'm voting no.
Okay, go.
So, I think, I think this is a Band-Aid to a bad Band-Aid. And we are penalizing landlords who have been charging below market rate rent and saying that they should somehow still be penalized, when I think the proper method is for the city to help provide actual assistance to people if their rent will be increased to current market rate. Then they, there should be maybe rental assistance, which West Valley Community Service is already providing, or down payment assistance to help them find housing. And because likely, a landlord in this current market condition where rents are dropping will be raising beyond 9% is a landlord who has been charging below 9% of market rent. So I think we are helping, we shouldn't, we need to be fair, a law needs to be fair. We want to help people, we shouldn't be penalizing people who have actually helping, have been charging below market rate to help renters. Yeah, so I'm voting no. How come it says yes? I press no.
It doesn't say anything yet.
Maybe you can reset and we'll do it again.
Grace, it's not showing. Oh, no, there it goes, it's done, okay.
And I believe I need, as an urgency ordinance, to read the following language.
Yeah.
Or so says the clerk.
Move it.
I move that ordinance number 19-2194, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino approving just cause eviction protections and rental rate limits effective immediately, be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the only reading thereof.
A second.
And that, and that motion carries with Chow voting no.
Okay, and then I move that ordinance number 19-2194 be enacted.
A second.
Vote.
I'm sorry.
Hello?
Can we do a...
Aye.
Okay, let's start again.
Oh, okay, there we go, okay.
And the motion carries with Chow voting no.
Okay, so we are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Okay, so first let's do future agenda items. Councilman Sinks, do you...
Excuse me, I'm, I am going to take off. I have an early morning meeting in the city.
Okay.
I don't have any future agenda items or anything else to report.
Great.
That I didn't earlier. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Chow, future agenda items.
So I guess activity first?
No, no, we're just doing future agenda items now.
Okay. So I think, oh, wait, where is it? Oh, so I'd like to clarify, to put on agenda library use agreement for the library expansion because the original, the original idea was to add a program room like this. And, but now we are actually adding two levels, basically two program rooms, all from City Fund. And the library district would not even provide rent for the space. So I think it shouldn't be used 100% by the library district for the entire county of Santa Clara County Library Users. I think the city, we need a use agreement so that the city retain one level of the library expansion for use by the city and residents. And maybe partially some of the program room, just like the agreement we have here. Because we are providing 100% of the funding. So we want to be sure that Cupertino residents benefit. And hopefully, the council can give direction, maybe Library Commission can figure out a proper use agreement. So we schedule agenda.
So does anyone else wish to push, put that on the agenda? Okay, anything else?
So you guys don't want to put that on the agenda?
I don't, because I don't believe, I mean...
You don't, you want to give library...
Well, we're not, what you said is not quite accurate. Because it's true, we're building a two-level program, two-level addition, but one of the levels is just replacing the existing level. There's really only one additional level. Because the way they have to build it, they have to tear down that first one.
You know that Santa Clara Library has specific use...
I'd just like to know if this isn't a noticed item and if the two of you would like to talk about it offline and consider bringing it back in the future.
Okay, right, so there's no second person to put that on the agenda that I see. So do you have any other agenda items?
Okay. So I guess this is more like for staff. I think we need more pedestrian education because we have busier, busier streets now. A lot of our pedestrians maybe are not crossing the streets. Maybe there are certain guidelines we can provide to help them to be safer. And during the day, but also at night, because there are cases where people wear all dark at night and then just cross the street. So that's all, I think.
Okay, Darcy?
I don't have items to add to the agenda.
Councilmember Willie?
So I would like to add an agenda item for a city survey on housing. And I had tried to move something along by creating a first draft. Apparently, it's going to take staff too long to do it, so it has to be an agenda item. The biggest development issue now going forward is building more housing. And I would really like to know that the residents understand and support. There's quite a few vague or misunderstood terms, and we need to let them know BMR, density bonus, waivers, concessions, these things. And they should be in a city survey so that the residents knowingly can let us know what they, they support.
Wait, so, but first, we would have to have the study session because otherwise, they wouldn't know how to tell us what they would support, because they wouldn't know what everything was, is that?
Why can't...
I mean, I think a city study session on housing is a great idea. And then have a survey.
So I would... I would like it not to be, you know, taking another six months or a year before we're going to get any feedback from the residents from the survey.
Right, but do you favor having a study session?
Concurrently.
To educate and then, then pull them on what, what they think? I mean, to me, it only makes sense to, it is, you're right, it's very complicated, all that stuff. So let, let's have a study session or a...
And concurrently have city staff prepare their first draft of the survey.
Sure.
Of which I've already got a first draft.
All right, they can prepare the survey, but we wouldn't do the survey till after.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I would support putting that on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
I would also like a study session on easements. And a study session on the library parking situation, as the library commissioner mentioned. Okay, so that, that's all I have in terms of agenda items. Now we can move on to reports of non-committee stuff, let's keep those brief.
Wait, just library parking or like Leana proposed six options of, of improving like traffic?
Oh, right, right. We would include things like drop-offs and, drop-offs and tra, you know, traffic improvement.
Other options.
Yeah, traffic and parking, okay. So let's do the reports, let's be as brief as possible since it's already after midnight. Okay, councilmember Chow, what are your top things you did in the past?
So many things. So on the 4th, Historical Society Christmas Party, Six Cities Association Party. And on the 8th, it's a Chinese school, North California Chinese School Association Dinner. And they are talking about how to make it better. And then I went to the Sim-Son event for, by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, an Apple Open House on the 13th. And we had coffee hour on the 13th with like 20-something people, 26 people attending. And this time, I and Deb stood there. So as a result, we had one conversation instead of multiple. So that worked out better. And, and then on the 15th, 16th, there's another Chinese New Year celebration. And 15th, a community member organized information meeting for people who are interested to apply for commissions. And so I attended that to provide feedback, okay.
Okay, I'll go next. Let's see, on December 6th, attended the tree lighting ceremony, the Cities Association Dinner. On, let's see, on December 9th, the LGBTQ Listening Forum, very, very well done.
Oh, yeah, I went there too.
The 10th, the City Cupertino Holiday Party. The 11th, I met with a group of teens regarding climate change and what the city can do. And we can do a future agenda item on that, things the city can do for more sustainability. On the 13th, I went to the Apple Open House VIP event and, and spoke there. And then on the 14th, for the public open house, I went, went to that. And I guess that should do it. Darcy?
So I went to a few of the aforementioned events. And then we also on the 14th had an event over at the Gate of Heavenly Peace Catholic Cemetery called Wreaths Across America. And that was a really good event, brought forward by originally in this community, I'm blanking on the names.
Dennis?
Yeah, Dennis and, and there was one other gentleman, I'm totally blanking on his name.
Is that Mike?
Right, Mike McNutt, thanks. Dennis Whitaker and Mike McNutt. And, you know, it was emceed by former council member and mayor Sandy James. And I think that it was, it was a good gesture towards the armed service members. And that was directly before the Apple Open House event, which I thought was really nice to see, actually, you know? It's, it's, it's the biggest park in our city and it's not publicly accessible. And to be able to see members of the community, you know, exploring the campus was a really refreshing kind of way of looking at that venue. So, yeah, hopefully, we can have more of those types of events in the future.
John?
The 4th, the Historical Society Dinner. The 6th, the Christmas Tree Lighting Equinum. The 6th, the City Association Annual Dinner. The 7th, the Rotary and Via Operation Snowflake, delivering snow and making a sled run for the developmentally challenged youth. It rained all day, got drenched, got a head cold. But even in the rain, the developmentally challenged youth were lined up to get on sleds and go down the sled run after we hauled the snow up the hill. The 9th, the LGBT Listening Forum. The 10th, the holiday, the city's holiday party. The 13th, the Spaceship. The 14th, the Wreaths Across America. And the 14th, attended Ro Khanna's Town Hall.
Very good, yeah, I also attended the town hall. I really enjoy, that was his 35th town hall since he was elected three years ago. So that is really incredible. That's something we can emulate, I think, with our outreach. So if there's nothing else, thank you. Ooh, we got a new gavel.